Welcome, school committee members, members of the administration, members of the public. The time is 7:06 PM. I'm calling to order the August 27th, 2024 Virtual School Committee Regular Meeting. This meeting is being held virtually pursuant to the Attorney General's updated guidance on holding virtual meetings pursuant to the Act extending 19 measures of March 29th, 2023, as extended through March 31st, 2025. This meeting is being recorded by SMAC for future broadcasting. I'll begin by calling a roll of the school committee members. Armando Barbosa.
Hi.
Lindsay Kreckler.
Present.
Karen Powers.
Here.
Chris Shannon.
Here.
And myself, Catherine Moise. I'd like to note that in many present, we have the Superintendent Dr. Joseph Baita, Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction Jonathan Ford, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources and Wellness Matt Colantonio, Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations Heidi Perkins. Also present is Stoughton Public Schools Media Relations Manager, Mr. Jeffrey Pickett. We have a quorum present, so let's begin. Tonight, we're going to begin with an update on our transportation situation. I'd like to start by giving an overview of how we got here. The FY24 budget for the 2023-2024 school year, the past year, had all transportation costs fully within the operating budget. With significant increases in Chapter 70 and Student Opportunity Act, or SOA, funding to the district over the past few years, the school committee pledged to families to waive fees for transportation as well as sports and activities. The FY24 budget also added an additional bus to our numbers. The FY25 budget for this school year, the 2024-2025 school year, represents a 7.1% increase over the previous year. That cost increase primarily can be traced to increased in constructional costs. That represents about 75% of the 7.1% increase that was driven by contractual obligations for the Stoughton Teachers' Unit, excuse me, the Stoughton Teachers Association and paraprofessionals, followed by out-of-district costs, which represent about 26% of the 7.1% increase. That's due to student needs and placements and increases in tuition over the past few years for out-of-district tuitions and administrative costs, which was about 5% due to individual contracts. There were also some slight decreases to school services, maintenance and operations, and fixed cost. The original FY25 budget proposal had added an additional bus above the FY24 numbers, but that was removed when it became apparent that our Chapter 70 SOA funding was not going to keep pace with previous years. When further scalebacks were made across all departments, from the school committee and inspiration to academics and sports and activities, the bus added and FY24 was removed. Additionally, for this school year, the district received 1,529 applicants for seats on the buses, an increase of 162 students, or 12% over last year. We believe there are a number of factors leading to this increase, including the district's increasing enrollment over the past few years, driven by an increase in residents with families. Unlike other districts in the news like Boston, Stoughton's school population is rapidly growing. This increase is separate from and in addition to the students coming to us from the sheltered populations hosted at the two hotels in town. Additional factors for the increased bus demand include the absence of fees, making the buses affordable for all families, and the ease of the online application compared to the previous paper form. Although I will note the switch to the power school was bumpy for some families this year, and a lack of access to technology and translation service hinders some of our families, which we need to resolve. Our many working-class families, a number of whom represent multi-income households, single parents, or grandparents raising grandchildren, are feeling some of the same rising costs associated with transportation that we are, like the availability and price of vehicles and parts, as well as insurance. As funds have become available, the school committee has prioritized adding back the staff and services that directly affect students, like transportation. We were able to add back the late bus for secondary students and have been advocating for the restoration of this bus for regular runs. When the school committee learned from the superintendent on August 14th that the new bus routes would leave 150 students without access to transportation, school committee members asked the superintendent to find a solution, including looking at cost savings due to changes in administrative staffing. Two recent resignations in the central office, the Assistant Business Manager and one Curriculum Advisor resulted in enough savings, which, if these positions are not filled, would fund the additional bus needed for this year. This would mean the bus funding would be fully within the FY24, excuse me, FY25 operating budget, with no need to cut programs or staff or ask town meeting for additional funding. The funding for the buses needed for the shelter population is coming from the state and is separate from that for this bus. Prior to this week, all 771 or 100% of the K through 5 students who applied for the bus have a seat, and that remains true. 381 out of 456, or about 83.6% of the 6 to 8, the 6 grades, we need grades 6 through 8 students, and 378 of the 453, or 83.4% of the grades 9 through 12 students had a seat. That left 75 students each in the middle school and the high school without a seat. However, with the additional bus, all secondary students who applied for a seat on the bus by June 28th will have transportation. And we want to thank families who reached out to provide feedback on the bus situation, particularly the bus application process. And we want to thank families who notified us they no longer require the bus transportation for the school year because they moved, because there were changes to their plans, or because they found alternate transportation. And thank you to Dr. Baita and the central office staff who worked with the bus company to rerun the numbers and secure the extra bus. And we also want to thank town meeting members this past May who voted down motions that would have caught significant money from the school budget and which would have severely affected our ability to provide services like transportation to our students. So that's kind of the back process of where we're at. Dr. Baita, and I know that you want to add some more to kind of where we are and what we're going to do about this bus situation.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the committee. I do have a prepared statement, but I also like to provide the latest update as of 4:00 PM this afternoon. First, I want to thank the Chair and the Vice Chair, as well as the full school committee for making this a priority based upon a very clear recognition that having 150 students not take the bus is something that we could not do. We did and are adding a secondary bus that will provide transportation to all 150 students who signed up by 6:28-24, the due date. We will be doing this by utilizing a double run. So this afternoon, after the bus company and my office, the central office and my staff, Bus 14-1 will be a second run in the afternoon. Bus 16-2 will be a second run in the afternoon. Wilkins 4 will be running approximately 15 minutes late in the afternoon. Wilkins 9 will be running approximately 15 minutes late in the afternoon. 15-1 will be a second run on Tuesdays and Wednesdays, and 15-0 will be approximately 20 minutes late in the afternoon. This is solely for the start of the school year. In other words, once we have everybody on the buses and we start to see the changes that take place in the first two weeks, three weeks, we will update this with parents and families on a regular basis. We will communicate this in two different ways. Number one, the impact of those 150 students to be able to take the bus, plus changes to other students because we've had to make these double runs for this year for the beginning of the year. What this all means is we're able to provide the transportation by utilizing, as the Chair noted, staffing savings throughout the summer months, resignations. And just yesterday, we received another resignation. Hopefully, we can hire at a lesser cost than someone who's leaving us. Those, that's where the money is coming from. It's imperative to note that we couldn't have guessed that 162 more students this year wanted to take transportation than last year. But that's the actual number. We moved to free, no parental cost transportation in November of '22, but free does not mean that there's not an expense line to the school budget. Third, and as important to my staff, is the politics of education are what they are, and I am not going to get into trying to bite the bone of the politics of misinformation and narratives that are both nasty and absolutely unfounded. To that end, I will say that I support myself, my staff, who are professional, kind, and trying to solve these problems every day since this issue was announced, both on weekends and after hours, in a way to support the Stoughton Public School families truly needed, and we understand that. What I met with families in the virtual meeting, what I noticed was an absolute cry for help and support. And I understand that. I get it. It's important. Many of us on this call, including my own family and so on and so forth, come from working stock folks who need to just try to get their kids to school safe and back home. So we're able to do that. It is unfortunate that outside of Stoughton, and I want to be clear, outside of Stoughton, the nastiness and the commentary that's taken place is just defined by the word absurd, and then I'll leave it at that. My folks are competent. They are working hard on behalf of the taxpayers of Stoughton and are doing their diligence to make sure that these students and all students are getting on a bus as much as we can. We will review this every single week through bus counts in the morning and the afternoon, and any changes that need to take place. Families will be informed in two different ways about changes in any way, shape, or form to students in this double run via an email communication and postcards. We believe that the email communication will get to you earlier than the postcards, simply because of snail mail versus email. So please check your email for that information. For the next school year, 2026, I will be seeking, through the Transportation Working Group, recommendations to the full school committee that is both informing the public earlier, requesting and requiring an earlier application process, and potentially a different policy all around by the school committee. As a school committee, the school committee controls policy of transportation, this particular issue. So those are my general comments, Madam Chair. I want to thank the school committee for providing me the support. I want to thank the parents for their due diligence, for allowing me the opportunity to try to resolve what is it, not only an important issue, but one that we have to resolve not only today, but as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments from the school committee members? Yes, Ms. Kreckler?
I just want to say thank you to Dr. Baita and the administrative staff that worked on this, and to the families for reaching out, for advocating. I'm glad that we were able to come to a solution and find something that'll get our students to school. I would like to just, I guess, firm it up by making a motion to freeze administrative hiring for the year for now so that we can focus that area of the budget towards other priorities, including transportation. So the motion would be to freeze administrative hiring at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Kreckler. Mr. Barbosa, do you have a question or comment before we get to the motion?
Yeah. Nothing in the agenda but a motion to or discussion of freezing. So I'm not too sure we can have that motion at this point. It's an important issue. I just don't see it in the budget. Are we allowed to just do that?
Madam Chair, through you to the committee. I believe that Ms. Kreckler's motion should note a hiring freeze for the purposes of non-regulatory requirements. In other words, special education, NEL, I really don't have an issue with. Replacing somebody who goes out on medical leave, I can't stop that. So I would broaden that scope a little bit to just, at this time. We can always come back and review it later.
I'm just saying, given the dynamic situation that we're going through, not hiring is kind of harsh because we may get stuck. We can't hire and we have more kids to teach or to bring into the school system. So that's my concern.
Just to clarify, I think with Dr. Baita's suggestion, the intention is to freeze administrative hiring at the district level so that we are, which is where those positions have opened up, and knowing what the transportation update was on the agenda and votes may be taken on any items. I think it's, I think we're okay to move forward with that.
We're looking to free up the funds, and these are the funds that are available, and they are at the central office level. Ms. Perkins?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out if it's all right with the school committee to mention that some of our hires are through grants and other non-budgetary funds. So to clarify in the motion, that you're talking really only about the operating budget. Appreciate it. Thank you.
This is a team effort, and I appreciate it. So we're saying administrative position. So let me rephrase my motion if I can. I would move that we freeze administrative hiring at this time funded by the operating budget with it, except for, sorry, Dr. Baita, what was the language around regulatory?
Yeah, I would say anything that's right. Like, if you say operating budget and, you know, a special ed teacher leaves, I don't want to have to come back in order to get approval to, you know, fill that position if it's more money, less money, or otherwise. So I would go with the idea that the, that the gist of, I think, and correct me, Lindsay, if I'm wrong, but the idea here is that unless we have special circumstances, staffing right now, and specifically administration, you're saying, is frozen at this time. So just keep it there and simple.
Ms. Powers?
I think I would go with what Mr. Barbosa said. If we can probably just wait until the next meeting to discuss the wording of whatever hiring freeze we decide to have, just to ensure that we get the wording correct before we decide to take a vote on it.
Madam Chair, in response, the committee will receive in the second week in September, the second, excuse me, the second meeting in September, with Ms. Kreckler, I believe, asked for a few meetings ago, which is a line item of expenses as it pertains to new hiree savings and so on and so forth. So I think clearly I understand what the committee is telling me. So I know that hiring administrators right now, I don't really need a vote. I kind of know what you're telling me. But you could also wait until that meeting so that you have more information and then work with what Armando and Karen are saying.
Thank you, Mr. Barbosa.
Yeah, this is rather confusing to me because we have a budget, and we can't go over that budget. If we can't go over that budget, we can't hire administrative staff. The suggestion is that we're hiring beyond the budget. And if we have a budget, we're not hiring beyond it. That's been set. I mean, I can see the point where people leave and we may not hire their replacement, but saying, making a motion that we're not going to hire, I mean, we can't because we have a budget. We've got to find the funds before we hire. Some kind of losses to this motion, I think we should just leave it so we can think through it a little bit more carefully before we go about doing this and then find out it's a mistake. I generally don't like to bring something up and hear it for the first time and then vote on it. I'd really like to think about things and perhaps even discuss it in this public forum when we can, before voting on it. A number of things came out here that would seem that wasn't totally thought out, and I think we need to be more thorough in thinking out the remediation about these thoughts before we vote. That's all.
Thank you. Ms. Shannon?
I defer to my colleague Lindsay Kreckler because I'm sure she has a direct response, and then I could speak at that point, if that's okay, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Kreckler?
Yeah, thanks, Chris. Just to clarify, this is something that, you know, I've shared with the superintendent last week and just, you know, the homework's been done. Also, you know, I made a motion. It's okay if nobody wants to second it. And I think the intention here would be, the way it's phrased, is to freeze administrative hiring, which is not talking about adding new positions. It's hiring, including filling previous positions. So just wanted to address that, Mr. Barbosa.
Thank you. Ms. Shannon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am also equally cautious. I would love to better understand the problem we're trying to solve for. Like, you know, I was under the impression that through some real detective work in figuring out, you know, where we might be able to free up existing slots, and then additional detective work on where we might be able to find the monies to pay for additional busing and a driver, and how we can creatively do the routes to get, you know, that the slots have been addressed. If they're being addressed through a forecast of budgetary savings as opposed to money we have in hand, I'd like to have a better understanding of that from Heidi Perkins so that I understand what a hiring freeze would accomplish. I think in general, to Armando's point, obviously, we have a budget, and it's not the budget we wanted, but we are very aware of how the town feels about going over the budget, you know. So obviously, working within our budget is something we very much are doing. And I know that Dr. Baita is working very hard to make sure that that happens, given the curveballs on a regular basis. But I just really want to understand the problem we're solving for and how hiring administrative freeze would solve for that. Because to me, that opens the question, has the busing issue been completely resolved at this point?
Yeah. I guess my question is, how important is it for us to secure the funding for the additional bus at this meeting? And is that something that we can wait until that second meeting in September when we have an update on the full budget? I guess my question is to Ms. Perkins or Dr. Baita. Yes, Ms. Perkins?
Yeah, there's a couple of things. September is very early to know what we'll see for savings, but for the general public as well, there are times when we have paras who, you know, we have a lot of turnover in paras. All schools do, sometimes in custodial and facilities. So we might see, even as we go through the year, we will see that there are times when a position is not filled. So it's, you know, you really can't be saying at the beginning of the year, what would be the concrete savings? It fluctuates, and let's just say we have a teacher go out on a sick leave, and they're getting their sick time, and we also have a sub in, and then we're paying both, also not necessarily budgeted for a long-term sub. So it ebbs and flows. What we can do is, the first quarterly update will be in the October meeting, but as mentioned, Matt Colantonio and his office in the Human Resources will come up with what are the known savings for the turnover that we did not know about. The retirements that we knew about when we were building the budget were already factored into the budget. But then, like as Dr. Baita said, someone even yesterday left. So, and we are very intentionally trying to find qualified candidates for any of the positions that are at a savings from the people who left. There are occasions when that can't be done due to, let's just say it's a high school science teacher, high school math teacher, some of the positions that are very difficult to fill, and we're competing against other districts. So that's not always the case, but in far and wide in general, particularly in our professional staff, because there are a lot of candidates, you know, with other districts having cuts with decreasing enrollment. That's to our benefit, that sometimes there's some teachers coming over from other districts due to budget cuts, and so there'll be a lot of ebb and flow. In the interim, I'll just add that we funded the late bus. We've been scratching every nickel and dime. The late bus was funded for this year with the prior remaining bus fees that were left in the transportation revolving fund. So it's not that we are saying we don't have money and then suddenly finding money in the budget. We just looked at every possible place there was to do as best we could. But the recent, the recent hiring, just really, there's been quite a bit of it in the last two weeks even. We know we had savings that would take care of that one bus for this year. Additionally, with the shelter funding, we have some positions that we can prorate now that some of that funding came in. The last funding bucket from FY24 came into the town about two weeks ago. And so we can now prorate some of our staff salaries potentially this year that deal directly in some of those programs where those, the students from, the sheltered students are participating. So we're looking at all of those things, but we are confident that we have already created by doing all of those things. And again, they were very recent. The shelter money just came in two weeks ago. The turnover has been in the last couple of weeks that we were able to say we are confident that we can fund this bus. We were not able to say so any sooner because we didn't have that information yet. So hopefully, that answers the question. I just want to add to that whenever you determine if you're going to vote, the concern is too on the language. We could have a principal or another administrator leave, you know, mid-year. Hopefully, they won't, but it can happen. Or go out on a leave where we do have to backfill with a new position or even an interim, or bump somebody up from an existing position to fill in as the principal. So there are a lot of reasons why we may actually need to fill administration roles or administrator roles without. So I would just want to say, if it's a permanent hire, that would be different from a very broad freezing. I am concerned that if we had something happen, it would tie our hands. So just wanted to point that out.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments from the committee? Ms. Kreckler, we still have the motion on the table. Do you want to address it, amend it?
Yeah, I would amend it so that it is motion to freeze permanent administrative hiring funded by the operating budget.
All right, so we have that motion that was made by Lindsay. Do we have a second? I can go ahead and second it so we can vote on it. The motion's been moved in second, and so we're going to do a roll call vote. All in favor, Mr. Barbosa?
No.
Ms. Kreckler?
Hi.
Ms. Powers?
No.
Ms. Shannon?
No.
And myself. Yes. So the motion failed 3 to 2. That doesn't mean we can't revisit it, but we will look at this further. And again, we do have that budget update coming in September, as well as the quarterly update in October. But it does seem like we do have the funding secured for this bus, so that is not an issue. If you want to make a note about the Transportation Working Group that Dr. Baita mentioned, because that will be examining the busing issue further and making recommendations for next year's budget. I also want to note that the emails for the bus registration for the school year noted that students will be placed on the bus in the order the applications are received. That was in the email. It was not maybe clear to some families that there was a possibility that we would not have enough busing for students, even if they applied. So that would be nice to have for future communication with families, as well as to have some communication should this come up again in the future sooner so that families would have an awareness of this and an opportunity to plan. Feedback about the application process and how applicants are prioritized will be something for the working group to review. The working group will probably have everything on the table. But I do want to note that any proposal to reintroduce fees must be purposeful and not prohibitive to our families. It's important to note that when we charge the families a fee for the bus, those fees don't cover the full cost of a bus. A bus cost, this additional bus costs $79,000, and for secondary students, it holds about 55 students, so you can do the math. And, you know, most of this, the funding does fall within the operating budget. Our budgets are going to change over the future. We have impending redistricting coming within the next few years. Our busing needs are going to grow, not just because our population continues to grow. We will need to bus the South School students, either elsewhere, either temporarily because we're doing an addition renovation to the South School, or permanently because we've closed the South School and moved those students to other elementary schools. If the Wilkins Project goes through, where it's going to be closed for a year to do HVAC, that HVAC repair, those students are going to need busing as well. If the new consolidation, excuse me, the new consolidated elementary school succeeds, we'll have an increase in busing because the number of students will be further away from their school buildings. And just to note, transportation costs have been going up for several years. We've known this. This has been something we're wrestling with, both for the general population and the special ed population, both within district and out of district. Those are likely to continue to increase. This has not been something that's been a priority for the state legislature despite petitioning from the Massachusetts Association of School Committees and the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents. So that's going to be something, this transportation is just going to become a bigger and bigger part of our budget unless something is done at the state. unless something is done at the state level. And we might have to get creative with some solutions and start thinking long term as we plan the FY twenty six budget. Chris, do you have, Ms. Shannon, do you have a comment?
Chris is fine, thank you. I I just had a quick question for the superintendent. I know that in your initial budget draft a year ago, there there was money in there for small buses for to facilitate transportation for school activities in small groups. I'm I'm wondering, had we purchased those buses, would, given the sheer size of the numbers, well, how might that have helped address the situation? And if you could remind me what the cost of a bus was again, that we were, that those short transportation buses?
Right, so the great question, and thank you for the question, Chris. In general, anytime you try to purchase some type of a transportation vehicle, you're a year out from getting it. So it would not have supported us this year in any way, shape or form. That's part one. Part two, we're really trying to articulate those buses, those mini buses over time to support not only some of our athletic programs and so on, but really also to start taking a look at our internal runs where we're currently using third parties at a significant higher cost than if we had our own mini buses slash minivan, minivans. That was an article that we moved forward, but we were asked to prioritize based on funding and we held it back. It'll be something that I think we will see for the general town meeting in the spring again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one more question for the the superintendent, and that regards the bus driver shortage. That's been an issue for the past few years. Do we, do we have a guarantee from the bus company that there are enough drivers, enough backup drivers? Actually, with these double runs, that's my concern is if we have a COVID outbreak and we have six bus drivers down, what's that going to look like for us?
Thank you, Catherine, Catherine, for the question, so that I can clarify. The reason why we're moving to a double run right now at the beginning to settle this issue is because the company cannot get us a couple of drivers that we were going to get, specifically this one driver. So right now, that's the reason why I said for the start of the school year, it's definitely a double run. But we believe in working with first student that we can move this to be lesser double runs and then hopefully eventually no double runs at all for the rest of the year. But we're going to be moving from the double runs right now that are probably three or four, hopefully to only one or two or even zero. Thank you for the question and the clarification.
Yes, Mr. Barbosa?
Yeah, just following up with what you just said. Any, any reason why there's a shortage in buses? I mean, bus drivers, is it something related to pay? Or is it just no one desires the job? Is it the licensing is too restrictive to ride a school bus?
I think it's a combination of a lot of things. One of them, we started with a shortage of buses before COVID hit and then COVID really did a spin on it, to be quite honest. And the company since then have been increasing hourly rates. I know a district that saw a twenty two percent increase in transportation costs in one year in Western Massachusetts, just for the purposes of trying to make pay more competitive. That's just one example. And I do think when we go out to bid, this is going to be a scary number, to be quite honest. It's in order to fulfill getting folks who want to do that job, it it's no longer that eighteen, nineteen, twenty dollar an hour job. It's it's clearly in the mid twenties and in some cases into the late and early thirties. So it's a combination of all of that. I know it's not just people not wanting to do it.
And I'll notice it's nationwide. It's not just a just a Massachusetts issue. I have friends who work in other states who have just as much issue securing buses for their districts. Mr. Barbosa, you have another question?
I, yes, please. Since we're talking about money and potential hiring freeze and so on, I was wondering, and this is probably more work than Heidi and Dr. Bayera would like to do, but is it even possible at this point to put together a quick what the next budget will look like or what we forecast the next budget look at?
It's, it's a little early because we have knowns and unknowns, right? The knowns is we can kind of look at our current staffing and say the raises for next year X, Y, and Z and get you that number. The problem is going to be the continuing issues in special education, ELL, and then all of our, what I would call contractual obligations, where are they going to land and so on and so forth? But I think Heidi has a further comment.
Ms. Perkins?
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to point out that we are actually still very much in the throes of closing FY twenty four. And we have the end of the year report coming up, which takes about four weeks. So to be quite honest, the roll up budget for the salaries only is slated for the October school committee meeting. If we have an opportunity, and we're still hiring, so we actually can't get it concrete in any case. If we have an opportunity to to send something out and, you know, informational wise to the school committee before that, we will. But I I just do want to be completely honest out there with it. We have significant things that we have to do under dusty timelines and and town timelines that we are pretty, pretty involved in at the moment, plus all the new hires and everything to put in in the system. It's a very busy time in the finance office, so I just don't want to over promise anything. But I I do appreciate the request and we will do as best we can.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments about transportation? Losing thoughts? All right, thank you. We're going to move on to public comment. If you would like to speak at public comment, please use the raise your hand function while I review the guidelines. The public comment portion of the meeting shall not exceed fifteen minutes. Citizens of the district will be allowed up to three minutes to make their statement and must begin their comments by stating their name and address. Please be respectful. If the number of people wishing to speak exceeds five, the chair will limit the number of speakers. A group of citizens appearing at a meeting to express their opinion on a particular topic should designate one member of the group as a spokesperson to be heard on the topic. Other members of the group may be heard if they feel that they can contribute additional information regarding the topic. Public comment is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between individuals and the school committee, is an opportunity for a citizen to express an opinion on a topic within the school committee's authority. The authority of the school committee primarily concerns the Stoughton Public Schools budget, the performance of the superintendent, and the education goals and policies of the district's public schools. I cannot see. Hang on a second, let me do some text work. Cannot see if anyone has their hand raised.
I don't see anybody either.
Okay, I'm just going to give it thirty seconds so that people can find their raise the hand function. All right, seeing none, we're going to move on to the third item on the agenda, which is the superintendent update, and I will turn it back to Dr. Bayada.
Thank you, folks. Good evening to all. Couple of general notes that I wanted to note first. We met with the new staff today. It was really cool to just see a lot of really folks that are ready to join us. It also made me, once again, feel incredibly old now that I'm hiring former students in Stoughton, so I'm feeling even older than I look. But I want to congratulate all of our new staff that are joining the spirit of this great community and Stoughton Public Schools. And we're excited about them. These are high qualified, high qualified, engaged professionals that both our principals and directors have done a great job. And I want to thank Mr. C in HR for doing due diligence and making sure that we're hiring highly qualified staff. I want to welcome all of our staff on Tuesday, September third, and then grades one through twelve on the fourth, kindergarten on the sixth, and pre-K on Monday, the ninth, as per the the calendar. I also invite you, the school committee, to the convocation if you'd like to join us. It's, the chair usually has a few minutes to rah rah the crowd, as I say. And I think this year will will be very positive, Catherine, considering the the height of labor relations being where they are. So we will start with breakfast from seven to eight, eight to nine thirty. We'll have welcome introductions, recognitions, and opening remarks. Nine thirty to ten, staff will return to school, except staff that will be meeting special education and ELL will be meeting as a district. And then building principals will have their back to school meetings, taking place lunches on your own this year, so that you know, and we look forward to that. I also want to remind families with everything that's having, happening around transportation that is, as of today, is much more positive than it just was a week or two ago. That we have a number of road work issue that are taking place within the town of Stoughton. Morton Street, Plain Street, Bay Road, West, Central and Central and Canton all have major work or detours that are taking place. Those projects under the control of the Stoughton Town Hall, if you will, DPW, there's very likelihood that we're going to be fine. However, the state work on the corner of Central and Canton is a state project. And we have less flexibility in knowing what's happening there. So when it comes to drop off at the Wilkins, the Hanson, OMS, and the high school, we are asking anyone and everyone to take the extra time to get to school with the opening of school next week, because we're not sure what some of these projects are going to be landing. I can tell you, Mr. Ford and I talk about this all the time, because he comes from out of town, but literally by my house. And I'm leaving from Stoughton and it's now taking me twenty minutes to get to work, when it used to take me literally three to four minutes to get to work. So be mindful of that. The Transportation Working Group will take up and be starting its work in the fall. And I will be asking formally the school committee start a redistricting committee in the fall as well, which should consist of parents and family and all of that stuff. That's my update, and I look forward to seeing everybody on the first day of school. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for the superintendent in the committee? All right, hearing none, we have a special treat today. We have an assistant superintendent update from the Assistant Superintendent of HR and Wellness. Mr. Colantonio, you're presenting on several matters for us.
Yeah. Before I get to bullet number one, I just want to echo what Dr. B said about the New Teacher Day. I love the first day of new teacher orientation. Kind of sets the tone for the school year. We have thirty six really solid, highly qualified, very energetic teachers who just came on board, many of whom are, you know, close to the beginning of their careers, which also did help with savings, but they're still super qualified and energetic. It was a great day. And that's like the, I think, the sort of unofficial kickoff to the school year and it went really well, so. So I have a few things to present, none of which require a vote, I believe. So it's just informational updates from the world of HR. The first is an employee handbook. I provided a copy of it, I'll say a draft employee handbook for Stoughton Public Schools. One of the things that I worked real hard on this year is an employee handbook. We had an employee handbook that was dated and needed tremendous updating. I think it, there was an effort to maybe update it during COVID that COVID that never took off. So didn't really start from scratch, but it took a long time to look at about a dozen school district employee handbooks and take what what needed to come from the old handbook, put it into the new handbook. A couple of things that I will say is that this is a draft. I I look forward to any feedback. This is not being shared right now. This, part of this process would be if you see something that you'd like to recommend, definitely all ears. Would like it to be a collaborative effort. I think that you'll see that it is like most school district employee handbooks. It is a collection of school committee policies that are important for teachers, for paraprofessionals, for other folks who work within a school system to have sort of culled out from the school committee policy, which is a fine resource also. And then there's a handful of other items that pertain to folks who work in the schools. So I also just want to note that the intention for the handbook is for it not to be a static printed handbook. So I I hope you will notice that there are not page numbers. The table of contents is a table of contents with links. And I think the idea for right away is to have this document be guided by links that can be updated much more easily than a static handbook, which has to get printed and revised, and we know how that goes. And then I think ultimately, the kind of trendy new thing in school personnel association circles is a, is to really have this exist on a website with a PDF printable version as part of it. So I think that's ultimately the goal. Jeff and I have already talked about that. So I will really quickly go through the table of contents. And I'll just mention some of the things that are brand new from from the last go around. The admin, we never really had that administrative page with with a list there. The new employee checklist is is pretty new. We we never had just contact information for the HR office of the finance office. The employee work assignment section is pretty new. The availability of collective bargaining agreements, they've always been available, widely available, but that wasn't in our handbook. The Title IX grievance procedures are new as of August first, the new regulations and the new updates there. The staff wellness section is brand new. The items pertaining to classroom teachers, that's really just a collection of school committee policies that pertain to instruction. And then the items pertaining to paraprofessionals looked at a lot of handbooks with paraprofessional language to find what worked for us. That was kind of part of the paraprofessional contract negotiations. We decided that instead of having a para handbook as a standalone from the employee handbook, we'd have an employee handbook with a paraprofessional section. And then the resources at the end weren't in the previous handbook and we added that as well. So I'm going to stop there because I am famously long winded, and this is the first of four bullets. And I'm just going to kind of open it up to either feedback or or questions.
All right, thank you. I think Mr. Barbosa has a question.
Yes, Armando. I think you're muted, Armando.
Sorry about that.
That's all right.
In this handbook, which sections do you feel will need the next series of updates?
So I think that the sexual, because of the Title IX updates, the sexual harassment policy is probably about to get updated. What's good about a nonstatic, non-print first version of a handbook is that when that gets updated, it can nearly automatically get updated to a handbook in this format. Most of everything else is, I would say, the not, the school committee stuff is, you know, you have the school committee working group and and that goes through that process. And we would update in our handbook when that got updated through that process. But I would, I think that most of the other items that were added were added this school year, and the language is pretty fresh on all of them.
Okay, thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right. Do you do have any feedbacks? You sent it to me. Oops, sorry, Ms. Shannon.
Sorry, there is one thing I did discuss with Matt earlier, just the idea of having a welcome page. So I just wanted to share that with the the school committee so that you are aware. Trying to make sure that we don't sound like we only hire lawyers and bureaucrats, that we actually hire people and care about people, so.
I love that idea. Absolutely. Will be a great addition.
Sounds good. If you have any other suggestions, you can email me. I'll pass them on to Mr. Colantonio. The next item on the bullets is the Unit A contract update for Appendix F.
Yes. So again, because I, because I think this is an informational update only, I want to say that I provided an overview of the the work that the Joint Labor Management Committee did. And I am happy to provide the full text of what the new Appendix F would look like or the old Appendix F. It's the last section of the teacher contract, if if folks want to see it. So certainly, if 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 you want more detail, I can provide that. So quick update on the Joint Labor Management Committee for teacher evaluation. I know that there were some joint labor management committees that were sort of added in this round of negotiations, and that's great. This is not one of them. This Joint Labor Management Committee was in the contract since we first added the Appendix F. And I always want to say two thousand and twelve, but it might have been two thousand and thirteen, Mr. Ford, one of those two are right, right? Yeah, it was that long ago. So that Joint Labor Management Committee has always been in there, and I'm going Yeah, it was that long ago. Um so that Joint Labor Management Committee has always been in there and I'm going to paraphrase without quoting it, but that that committee was always sort of um given the authority to meet um labor and management, teachers being evaluated and administrators evaluating um and make updates, uh revisions and refine the language of Appendix F um for DESE updates. And so um that uh group had met and done a lot of work, but the Appendix F actually hadn't been updated. So the language in Appendix F um is from um either twenty twelve or twenty thirteen. I I wasn't there, but I know it's one of those two um years. And so it had stayed there. It was stagnant. It was pretty outdated. Um some things had stayed. The evaluation hadn't changed too dramatically since then. Couple of new additions in the new model language, but um certainly language was updated. So the Joint Labor Management Committee um early on, one of our first meetings, we decided that we would start with where the old Appendix F started with, which was the model um language from the Massachusetts Model for Educator Evaluation. So there's model bargaining language, um contract language and the two thousand and twelve or thirteen language was used in the old Appendix F. And we decided that we would start with the new twenty nineteen model language, Massachusetts Model Language. So we started there. Um and I put that in as a link in my memo. Um and didn't know if everyone would want me to provide the whole model language or all of Appendix F, but again, I can provide all of that. If everyone wants to see what it would really look like at the end of that contract, I can totally do that. So what I tried to do was what I thought would be just a helpful summary by element without talking about section seven A one or the pages that they do because it's Appendix C in the model system for evaluators. So the pages are like C nine, C eleven. Uh I try to just break it down by evaluation element. So we're essentially agreeing to adopt the model, Massachusetts Model Language from twenty nineteen. And then with a few adaption, uh adaptations. So here are the adaptations. So under evaluation cycle, um there there, these tasks, these tasks to be completed by um educators were separate and they had separate due dates. And we decided after years of doing them that for everyone, it's just easier for the, for them to do it all at once. So instead of the first due date being October first, you'll see these in the timelines too. We decided to combine these things um and have them all do on October um fifteenth. Um those activities lend, i- it's all one thing. It's, it makes sense after you do it for a while to kind of combine those things. Uh we added some language under goal setting. Um I would say the spirit of all of the additions is to make sure that the goal setting process is yes or Dr. B.
No, keep going. When you're, when you're done, I just want you to comment on one thing.
Okay. Um the spirit of the additions under goal setting are just to make sure that it's a collaboration between the evaluator and the educator. That was the spirit of the Joint Labor Management Committee. Um I would, I would say that we were um collaborative. Uh there were some things that the administrators felt um should be in there. There were some things that the teachers felt that should be, should be in there, but it was very collaborative and we left feeling um um like we had come to a real agreement on what um this would be. Um so um so you see the changes there prior to the goal setting process. Um Stoughton Public Schools will provide access to assessment um data, um tools to analyze the data and access to the school um and district goals. That might seem obvious, but that's just something that we put there in writing. Um there's lots of common assessment assessments. There's common assessments at every grade level. Um and for um if not every subject, nearly every subject. Um so anything other than common assessments, uh we just wanted any anticipated student learning ga, gains um to be agreed upon by the educator and the evaluator, so it wasn't sneaking up on either party. Um and then any changes to the goals by the evaluator must be made in consultation um with the educator. The evaluator has the final say in goals, in the model language and in um in our new Appendix F, um but the spirit of collaboration is in there. Um for unannounced observations, so the heart of the changes in twenty thirteen was the addition of unannounced observations. There were no unannounced observations um before twenty thirteen. So we've had them for a while and um we've gotten um pretty used to them. They're wonderful, organic, unannounced, quick peek into a classroom. Um and so um in the model language, it says that they can be um any duration. We agreed it would be ten minutes. Um so we would do ten minutes, put a sort of minimum um on an unannounced observation. Um we added some language. Um the spirit of uh multiple evaluators sharing and educators try to vary when they're being observed. So not always seeing them in the same exact class, the same time of day, the same day of the week. So we added some language so that um those things would be varied. And then we added language that um the educator may request a meeting with the evaluator um if they feel like they're being observed um all the time in the same period, or it's always the same uh time of day or day of the week to to vary that. Um and then that the evaluator can meet with the building principal if they want to request an alternate observer. So we really share um teachers and um that we have primary evaluators and supervisory evaluators and um and so that's that meeting. This is not really a change, but I just wanted to put it in here. So one great new part of the twenty nineteen model language that didn't exist in the prior uh Appendix F um is the addition of um some other uh wonderful um observable moments in teaching um for teaching practice that aren't just um observations. So learning walks, instructional rounds and walkthroughs, um adding these to the list of the unannounced um observations, that is instructionally an awesome addition um to to be added, very collaborative, um positive feedback, um critical feedback, um groups of people. Um and the only thing that we added was that if those things are going to be considered in a value and up observation to go into the teacher's evaluation, um that they'll be notified, which I think is is great. Um so that's a great addition. On the back, um evidence, um and so the list of evidence, um we we uh kind of adapted to keep a little bit like our current Appendix F. So we have this thing called Attachment A uh to Appendix F. Attachment A is a list of uh common artifacts, um types of evidence that teachers um need to upload, types of evidence that speech and language folks need to upload, uh types of evidence that um counselors need to upload. Um and um so the evidence that we're requiring uh i- is the evidence as it's outlined in a attachment A. So Attachment A does a nice job of making sure that all the requirements are met for family outreach, professional collaboration, um uh reflection, all the things that are in the teacher rubric. Um we added this thing in parentheses that probably no one would notice, but I just put it in there. Evidence of ongoing professional development and learning that's in the model language. We just added especially those linked to educator goals. That's kind of a twofer um for evidence. Uh it supports their learning goals and it supports um that standard. Um summit of evaluation and the educator plan, uh we um changed this section. So for our professional status teachers, teachers with professional teaching status, they're on a two-year plan. If they have a proficient, overall proficient or exemplary, um we agreed to place them on a two-year plan. That is really our practice anyway, I want to say. The new model language allows evaluators to sort of decide that even if a teacher is proficient or exemplary, that they'll put them on a one-year plan. We really felt that that could smack of um being punitive, like why a one-year plan if you're proficient or exemplary? Um the evaluators didn't feel like they would really do that a lot or ever. So we just sort of decided if you're a professional teaching status and you're exemplary, proficient or exemplary, that you would go on to a two-year plan. Um exceptions could be made for that. Uh this happens a lot when you get a new teacher on a team of three and you want your goals to match. They might ask to go on a one-year plan instead of a two-year plan. Um if you're rolling out a new um initiative or a new software and and the people on the two-year plan want to be on a one-year plan. So we didn't want to say that would never happen, but we wanted to say generally they would go to a two-year plan. Um and then um the summit of evaluation rating must be based on evidence from multiple categories of evidence. There was a list of categories and we just decided to keep it multiple categories. Uh we thought it was better to just say multiple categories. And no one has ever done this, but just to say MCAS growth scores shall not be the sole basis for summit of evaluation rating. And in fact, I should note that the MCAS sentence uh is not an adaptation. I apologize. That's actually from the model language, but yeah, we took out the list in between those two. Um the group was excited to start meeting this fall. Um the two things that we want to tackle is a brand-new teacher rubric, um which um we are um, you know, I guess required to adopt unless we want to adapt. So we want to take a look at that uh teacher rubric as a group and decide if we want to just keep it as it is or maybe adapt. In order to adapt the rubric, you have to present it to the state and they have to approve it. So it's kind of a long process like that. Um and then we want, we definitely want to redo common artifacts. Uh we did decide that the revisions to Appendix F, uh Appendix F, that was a, there was a lot to revise there. We don't think it's substantive um changes. We don't think we really changed our process or what we're requiring teachers to do. We just think it's a big update because it was so outdated. Um that was the feeling of the group anyway. Um but um we really want to redo the common artifacts. We, they, they, they're wonderful. It's a great group. People worked hard on those common artifacts. People use them um and they definitely meet um the need for evidence, but we're looking forward to redoing those. Um and um yeah, I think those are the two topics that we'll um kind of tackle in the fall. And again, the link to the twenty nineteen model language is on this memo. Um if you want to see it, i- if you would like me, I'll send you anything you want me to send you. If you want me to send you Appendix F, the old version, I'll do that. If you want me to send you the new version of Appendix F in its entirety, I'll certainly do that. It's a little worried about time for the meeting and the four bullets I was doing, so I just kind of did the overview, but happy to send any of that. And uh yeah, that's it.
Thank you. Before I get to Dr. Baeta, I just want to say that um as chair and the person who has been on the um Unit A um negotiating team, I would appreciate the full text of Appendix F. Um you know, maybe we're sending to the full committee just for our records, but I would certainly like, appreciate a copy of that. But thank you.
Yeah, I'll send that out.
Okay. Uh Dr. Baeta, I know you had a comment to add on this.
Yeah, just, just really that um the, one of the most important things on quote our side of the aisle in terms of evaluating staff is meeting deadlines. It's incredibly important. Um arbitrators have sided with labor on this. We, we must as evaluators at minimum meet deadlines. Um if we don't, um we really stand alone and um are not going to go anywhere. And that, and that's not a a negative comment. That's just so that you, when you look at these dates and why it's happening, um it's, it's so significant. Second to that is Unit A alone is over four hundred people that need to be evaluated. Um so um as we look at who's evaluating, when they're evaluating, how to meet those deadlines, it's also as imperative, as important. If you want to get into improvement and change and constantly moving forward versus compliance. Those are two very different um ways at looking at evaluation, continuous improvement, trying to get better um versus check the box, I've met the deadline, we're compliant. Um and we, we see that all over education all the time. And our goal uh as we're moving forward is really improvement um and support and not just check the box for compliance. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from on the Appendix F? Yes, Mr. Gregler.
Um just really quickly, Mr. Colantonio, if you wouldn't mind also sending me Appendix F, I'd love to take a look at it. Um because I am the um school committee representative for Unit B negotiations and because this impacts them as evaluators, I think it'd be just helpful for me to have the context too, if you wouldn't mind.
Absolutely. Yep. Yeah, and I will say the Joint Labor Management Committee, we had nine teachers from every level, pre-K, elementary, middle school, high school. We had several administrators, many Unit B administrators, just so everyone knows, they were in the room um working on it, trying to get to that place that Dr. Baeta mentioned. You know, the sweet spot is that folks feel like about the evaluation system is not Burdumson, not checking off the boxes. You're actually like feeling instruction, thinking instruction, improving instruction, and that people are getting something out of it. Because it is a lot to this new system, like it's a lot. Having done it, building principal for a long time, system principal before that, it's a lot of observations, it's a lot of write-ups, and if it's not you know, doing something positive for you, it is, it's just such a shame because it's so much work. But uh yes, I will absolutely send that along. Um I didn't talk about timelines. I'll just note one thing without going over it all. If you were to compare the model language timelines with Stoughton timelines, I would say, and I'll say this to anyone at the state, ours are better. Because the way that they do it in the model language, they make it a little bit confusing for folks on a one-year plan versus a two-year plan. It's one of the criticisms of the model language, if I can say that in a public um forum, I just did. So say lovey, let it ride. But um so we really tried to tease out the timeline distinct for two-year plans versus one-year plan. Um and the two-year plan is not really different than the model langu, language, except that our first three tasks are one task all due on October fifteenth, as I mentioned before. But for the one-year plan, we did um put a lot more detail into ours for our non-professional status teachers so that our observations are spaced out and they don't all come in one month. You don't want to be doing that with first-year teachers, second-year teachers, or third-year teachers. And we also had a habit in Stoughton of um in the unfortunate um situation where you're non-renewing a non-professional status teacher. Um we, we were doing that before our evaluations were complete, which is not a good practice. So we sort of fixed that a little bit um with our deadline for summatives. So, sorry, forgot to mention that.
Thank you.
Chris.
Yes.
You are muted, Ms. Shannon.
I clicked the wrong thing. My hand did go down though. Um so there you go. Uh I would love to see the, the full Appendix F. Um I had a whole mess of of questions. Um appreciate the summary. This is probably one of the few times where I would probably appreciate uh the reams and reams of paper in lieu of the summary or in addition to the summary. Um but I, I had questions around like, you know, a goal according to like the teacher's professional or career goals or aspirations, the goal according to uh performance goals, you know, at the individual level. Are we, are we comparing me to me last year? Are we comparing my subject to the subject last year, at least for secondary school teachers? Are we doing it grade level by grade level? Are we doing it school by school? Are we doing it according, you know, a goal of what? It just um there was really a, a lack of specificity there in terms of to what end, a goal really ultimately for whom. Personally, I would love to see one specific to the educators, but I know that often testing or school performance or district performance data gets wrapped into that.
It's one of me.
So just, just clarity around that. Um I had rubric written in here several times, so I loved hearing that you guys are going to be looking at a rubric. Um when you have a draft rubric, I would love to see that. Um uh would love um, you know, to know, are these is this like a goal for this year alone, or is this a goal that you build upon like every other year, meaning um I want to build my leadership goals. So for these two years, I'm going to do X, Y, and Z. Or, or is it increasing, you know, the reading level of my third graders by X percentage points? You know, in the same way that the school district has like a strategic plan and then every year over the course of that strategic plan, you're adding to the data and the best practices that that make those specific improvements. So, so is this um, I know you say formative and summative, but it feels like formative and summative within the evaluation time period and not necessarily for the teacher's overarching goals. So I, I just had questions around that. Um and is the rubric going to reflect, for example, best practices around like, you know, and and under general categories? As a, as a teacher, I always loved letting students know the, the performance expectations upfront, and I know teachers would equally appreciate that upfront. So knowing like what categories in terms of what aspects of um teaching or instruction are going to be covered and then what would um, you know, ideal look, what, what would proficient look like versus the exemplary? And I'm sure that will be covered in there.
They get all that stuff. They, they get the rubric in advance and they get a thing called Look For's. This is what, this is what that rubric looks like in, in practice. It's all part of the Massachusetts model, but yeah, and, and when I, when I send the full text, you'll see the full text in the description of the goal, so.
Uh and the last thing I noticed that you removed student feedback. I think that's probably um a, a a good move. Um but I do love the idea of feedback loops. I'm a big fan of feedback loops, as Dr. Baeta knows. And, and I'm just wondering if there are any data points in And, and I'm just wondering if there are any data points and maybe this is something that John Ford can look at. But data points that might provide signals of student feedback and what that might look like. Or maybe the educators themselves might have some ideas around that. So I just, I just pose that as an open-ended question. So, but thank you again for the summary. Look forward to getting that whole appendix.
Yeah. So it could be a lot and I, so you have the model language and then appendix F. So, and so I'll, I'll do append, the old appendix F and the new appendix F, and then the links to the model language, if you want to also go there. Does that make sense? To everybody? And we did talk a lot about student feedback. We're excited to get to a place where I think we, both sides using student feedback, we just want to make sure we're specific about it and using specific feedback and good feedback. And it, that was a brand new thing, not in the old appendix F. And I think we'll, we'll get there. But yeah.
Way, way back in the day, I did that regularly. I always handed out any vowel to all of my students that included like the three assignments or things that we did in class that you'd like the most and the three things you could do without and, and an idea of something to add.
Yeah.
For, for the next class. And so all, so my classes were continually iterative.
Yeah.
So I, I and it gave them a voice, if anything, to complain about what they really did not like about the class. And sometimes that's helpful. But I, I think it's not so much the student feedback, it's what the teacher does with that student feedback.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on the appendix F? All right, let's move on to the job fair. That was an exciting.
Yeah, these are, so yes, so both, the next two bullets are sort of like the, the, the ends of the spectrum for what we're trying to do with recruiting, recruiting and hiring and attracting the best talent. So the job fair is like hyper local. We advertise, this is our August job fair. We're looking for student support positions, custodians, food services, any open par position. We're looking for local folks, people from the community to come in, a lot of entry-level jobs. So we started last year, it was, it was good. And then this year, it took place on August 20th. We advertised it locally. Jeff Pickett did a great job like he always does of getting it out there on social media, media. And we had an unbelievable turnout. So this year we had much less of a need for these support positions. I don't know if everyone remembers last summer, this, it's really been the tale of two summers for hiring. I'll tell you, but, but we had less of a need, but we still had some open positions. We're doing the fair, we want to start it as a tradition. This is something that the community can always expect if they're looking for work. We had 68 folks fill out applications. So that does, we had more visitors than that. We had some people come by who didn't fill out applications. We had six, eight, 68 people come by to fill out applications. We had 30 folks interested in food services. I think they had two openings or three openings. That's like they've never, that's never happened in food services. That, that three openings, 30 people interested. I don't think that's ever happened. We had 17 people interested in par position. We had a coach. We didn't even advertise with Coach. We had someone show up. They were like, I want to coach basketball. Like awesome, Robin Ireland, the AD. And we had a few other folks looking for custodial jobs, school security jobs. So that was really great. And we have seven hires from the fair and a couple of recommendations on the way. And so that was great. The opposite end of the spectrum for our hyper-local hiring fair that we do at the Jones Gymnasium and people just kind of walk on in and get some coffee and goodies and fill out an application. I'm very happy to say that we sponsored an international teacher this year. We have a teacher at Stoughton High School. Her name is Camila Deffenthaler. She is from Brazil. She was in the US. And she started teaching at Stoughton High School last year. In, in order to remain in Stoughton, she needed what's called H1B sponsorship. So the H1B visa is a specialty occupation visa. If you're not familiar with it, I believe we had an exchange teacher from, from China in 2010. We haven't really done the H1 visa, visa thing since then, but this is a visa category that applies to foreign nationals who wish to perform services in a special occupation on a temporary basis in the US. This is what international teachers, this is their visa that they're on. So if you can remember a time when you were in high school and you had a Spanish teacher who came over from Chile, like Mr. Colantonio did in 11th grade, Senor Gonzalez, he was one of my favorite teachers of all time. This is the visa that they're on. So uh, almost completely in the realm of world languages, but not always. There's a sort of general understanding that having international teachers here temporarily does a lot to teach our students about their culture and the language obviously goes without saying. Camila is a native Portuguese speaker from Brazil who's teaching Portuguese. So we use a company called Teachers Council. They specialize in this work. They make sure that you do everything that you need to do and that you do it by the book. And yeah, we got, in May, we got the news that the sponsorship went through. So we have an international teacher for a few years at Stoughton. And I'm pretty happy to announce that. So, and I like that at both ends. Super local hiring fair in the Jones Gymnasium and then internationally sponsored teacher from Brazil. So.
Thank you. Mr. Berber, any question or comment?
I'm just curious, what's the position that's been hardest to fill in the last couple of years?
So it's a little bit of a list. But in teaching positions, just like, so bus drivers, that is, as everyone said, national trend, bus driver shortage, just not a lot of people doing it. And in teaching, for a long time, it's been math and science, generally math and science. Those have been harder to fill. I was an English teacher. The joke with English teachers is where a dime a dozen. You know, you can, you can throw a baseball in a price right parking lot and hit someone who's certified to teach English. That's just the truth. I'm saying that because I'm an English teacher. Math and science, it's harder to do. So kids who, college students who major in math and science, they often don't go to the classroom. It's just a, sort of a trend. World, I would say that in special education is difficult to fill. It's pretty competitive. And I would say world languages has become a challenge to fill. World languages has become a challenge to fill. It is, there's not a lot of college students majoring in a language and then going to teach that language. They should because they would have all sorts of employment opportunities, but that's not happening right now. So those have been hard to fill.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other questions about the job fair or international teacher sponsor? Yes, Ms. Shannon.
I just love, love, love bringing the international teachers into the classroom. So thank you for, for making that happen.
Yeah, it's great. Thanks.
Mr. Berber, another question?
Yeah, one more question. I was wondering if, if it's even possible to partner with other hiring places at this job fair. For example, the bus companies might be interested in tracking bus drivers that live in Stoughton. I don't know if that's permitted because of the school environment, but I thought maybe, I know often when when I've gone to job fairs, there's usually a number of different companies and they all line up. And I thought maybe if
Stone School. Hundred percent. Yeah, they can have a table at my fair. Absolutely. We need bus drivers. Yeah, it's a good idea. Whatever helps.
Will there be a reach out to them though?
Sure.
At the next job fair?
Yeah, if, if that is helpful for the, the company that we use for, for buses, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, maybe we can get priorities in getting those drivers.
Yeah, even, even, even folks who are interested and will be trained, I would think. It's quite a shortage. Yeah.
Yep. Thank you.
Anything else from Mr. Colantonio? All right, let's move on to new business. The first item on the agenda is the school physician appointment. And the school committee appoints the school physician on recommendation from the superintendent as per the Education Reform Act of 1993. Dr. Baeda, could you do a quick presentation on what the school physician does and the recommendation that we have from our head nurse Danielle Gallon, please?
Madam Chair, through you to the rest of the committee, Danielle Gallon, who is our Director of Health Services for the district, is recommending that we continue with Dr. Michael Klein as our school physician for the 2425 year. This is a yearly appointment by the school committee by law. He's supportive and valuable resource to Stone Public Schools. As she notes in her comments, you will see that he's been with us since 2019, which would have been literally just before the hit of COVID. So I'm sure that Danielle and company used him as a resource. It is a straight stipend of $7,500. And as you can see, he's a graduate of Brown University in ancient studies medical school at Brown Medical residency at the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill. And he has numerous awards that are noted within. He currently resides at the Compass Eastern Family Medicine here in Southeastern, literally right down the road from us. It's our recommendation that we continue to utilize Dr. Dr. Klein's services for Stone Public Schools.
Thank you. Any questions any about the school physician? Yes, Mr. Berber.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Is he a, a pediatrician physician or is he a generalist, a primary care physician? What is he exactly? Whoop, can't hear.
I think you're off.
He works at the Compass Eastern Family Medicine, so he's dealing with family medicine in general. So we have to work with, with doctors are basically doing everything from, if you will, school age through the age of 18. They work as a consultant basis in general. So someone like Danielle is our lead or our nurse could be calling them and saying, I have this situation in our school, what's our next steps? Or it could also be that we're utilizing the doctor for a, a challenge of a medical situation. I, I E, I, I can reach out to the doctor on a personnel matter if needed.
Thank you.
Ms. Shannon, question or comment?
Questions? How, how often? Are there like regular meetings or is it just at will as needed? So let's start there.
At typically, in my experience, has been as needed. Sometimes it's in consultation for what's the best way to do X, Y, and Z, let's say a new situation. Right now, for example, our nurses could reach out because of Triple E, which has become something that's become significant in, in the community, some of the communities surrounding us and south of us and even north of us. Though there could be a, a consultation from, from Danielle as the head to the doctor about what kind of communication should we make with families? We have potential, you know, we've just got notified of a potential case. What kind of notification should I be making to the general public, so on and so forth? So it's in general as needed.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. And do we know for a fact he is still in the area and still available?
As of the writing of this, yes.
And the writing of this happened when?
This would have been, would have been contract, it would have been about two weeks ago.
Okay, can we get an updated resume?
Yes.
Because he no longer works at Compass Medical.
Okay.
And I can't speak at all to whether or not he can still be courtesy staff at Good Samaritan Medical Center, so.
Didn't know that. Thank you.
Yeah, Compass, Compass Medical completely folded overnight unbeknownst to the physicians and staff who work there, leaving 10,000 patients without medical care last spring. So I, I can tell you for a fact because he used to be my PCP.
Okay, well, I didn't know that. And so thank you for that. I will reach out to Danielle to make sure we get that. So therefore at this time, I would, I would withhold the school committee voting on this until I support getting information on Ms. Shannon's comments. And I apologize, I did not have that information.
Yeah, no problem. You, you wouldn't have known unless you were personally affected. If last I heard via the grapevine, because I could not find him online, he was in Quincy. If Danielle is looking for recommendations, I can recommend another family practice that is actually in, I think they are also technically Northeastern, but they're right by Roche Brothers down Washington Street. And they see a lot of families in Stoughton and there might be some comfort there. And I highly recommend the practice. That's where a lot of the people ended up going when Compass folded.
Right. There, I, I will tell you, Chris, that my, my overall experience with medical doctor recommendation placements is there are not a lot of MDs willing to be connected to school systems. But I, I would like to withhold this, this vote tonight.
Okay, I can personally vouch for Dr. Klein. He is a very personable, down-to-earth, well-read. And, and I found him to be a very good practitioner. So I, I can, I can speak at that level as well.
Good catch, Chris.
Thank you. Mr. Colantonio, you had a note?
Yeah, I just remember Dr. Klein with the weigh-ins for wrestling, that's one of the things that a school doctor has to do when you, when you do the official weigh-in for the wrestling teams, the school doctor has to sign off on the sheet. No one else can sign off on it. And Dr. Klein did a good job with the, with the weigh-ins for wrestling, for whatever that's worth.
Thank you. All right. So this will be tabled for the moment. We'll move on to the hall monitors. UFCW Local 791 MOA. This is our, the newest members of one of our unions. Um, Dr. Baed, are you willing to present the MOA from the Hall Monitors Union?
Madam Chair, through you to the remainder, to the rest of the committee, excuse me. We were approached, as you know, back in the spring about a formal designation of the 10 hall monitors to become part of the United Food and Commercial Workers Union Local 791, also known as our paraprofessional group. This group of 10 hall monitors has negotiated within the UFCW Local 791 and has a, now has a potential pending school committee approval at the next meeting of a contract for three years. It's a grounded on a three-year contract after three years of these 10 folks not seeing any increases. The contract does not provide anything specific except for the following. It is an eight-hour workday. It is at $21 an hour in year one, 23 in year two, and 25 in year three. The total cost added to that is also a flat stipend for coverage of in-school suspension rooms at the middle school and the high school. In terms of other availability, they do have longevity payments starting in year 10. I think our most senior person is now just finished year six. And then they have under sick leave pay time off of eight days per year. And then they were granted five years of sick bank individual time based on years of service. So one year of service got them five. Now they have 13 with the eight that are added on. In general, the rationale behind all of this is that these folks, when they worked, they got paid. When they didn't, they didn't get paid. So they filed to become a union and negotiated to do so. That's the overarching issue or topics. The general cost in the first year is 22,006, uh, uh, 260, then 33,620 in years two and three at $2 each of those second and third years.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the committee on this MOA? Yes, Ms. Greckler?
Thanks. Dr. Baed, I know I had to send you this in an email and I know Ms. Perkins, you spent a lot of time earlier in the meeting speaking to like some of the fluctuations that happen within the fiscal year and the budget, but given that there's financial obligations in this contract for FY25, I was hoping we could speak to, to where those, what savings are covering that in the FY25 budget?
I can take that. It's grounded again on the earlier comment of our savings in the hiring process that's taken place. Literally the last two weeks is where we've been in, been able to see some of our flex, flexibility. As you know, we also hired a K teacher because of our class sizes at 26 back in July and also grade three because of 27 kids in the classroom. Otherwise, we have been completely frozen, except in those mandated areas. I believe that right now we received a resignation at Stone High School yesterday, if I remember correctly. Today's Tuesday, so Monday in a pretty significant area. Anytime you get something in special education at the secondary level, that's a difficult area to fill. So we're going into the school year right now, trying to fill that one position in that area. We just hired the school psychologist, which was a position we've had actually open for quite a while. That was last minute. That was last minute hire required. It's either that or we have to use third-party billing. And as you know, that's an area that I'm really keeping an eye on because I am concerned about utilizing third parties. But yes, it'll come from the 22,000 will come from savings in all hiring personnel line items.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments on this MOA? Following school committee practice, this is our review of this. We hope to we will vote on this at the next meeting. If there are any further questions or comments, you could send them to the chair and I'll pass them on to Dr. Baeta for us to have answers so we can have a discussion about the contents of this and hopefully ratify it for the hall monitors. All right, if there are no no more on that, we're going to move on to FY25 unemployment costs. This is a presentation from Ms. Perkins.
Thank you. This is actually just a informational only to let the committee know. We obviously, as our ester grant has come to an end, as everybody's has in the country, there was a few positions that were in the grant that are now no longer existing, such as the interventionists. So that's one group that we are seeing on the unemployment bill for July. And then we had some other non-renewals. And again, that's various things, whether positions didn't exist or you know, people weren't renewed, or they were out of funding that expired. But the end result of that, just we budgeted 25,000 in the unemployment line. Our portion of the July bill is $31,230. So we have already exceeded the budgeted amount. I'm anticipating, to be honest with you, it'll probably be very similar for August. After that, presumably, and hopefully, a lot of these folks will find a job in another school district. So we'll keep you posted, but just wanted to let you know, right now, it's not a grave concern. Again, there will be fluctuations in the budget as we go. There'll be savings, like I said, with absences, unfilled positions while we, you know, mid-year, we post, and it takes a little while to get applications and then hire. So we could have four or six weeks of any position or even longer that is not filled. So not terribly concerned, but we we do have, like I said, some of the other special funding that's coming in for various things that will help offset some other areas of our budget to make this work. And if, you know, we had to take other steps later in the year, we would. But it's not a significant concern at this time, but it is on the concern list of things that are happening. That's that's really all there is to share with that.
Thank you. Any questions? Yes, Mr. Revosa?
When do you estimate it will become a concern?
Well, again, we'll look at when the September bill comes, which really wouldn't be until the beginning of October, and just see if a lot of these people have found other employment and are off the bill. At that time, you know, we'd probably sort of have to assess if and I get that, you know, the economy is what it is. Some people might have difficulty finding something right away. But the people who are, for instance, in any of the teaching staff recurring that are that are long-term or or plan to be long-term school staff, some of them, if not all of them, who knows, are probably interviewing now or have already accepted a job. And we don't know that. We can't track them, but we'll start seeing if people sort of fall off the off the bill come September.
If if they don't fall off the bill, when there will be a concern?
Well, putting me on the spot here, I'm just going to say it depends on everything else that's going on, you know, in a $60 million budget and millions in grants, so many things can fluctuate. So, you know, and and I will add to that, we just for general purposes, there's lots of things going on. For instance, at our preschool, all of our classes are full this year. And in fact, we have a waitlist. So when there's tuitions being paid in, you know, perhaps after we get everything in, which probably be, you know, mid-fall, we could look at whether the offset from that tuition being paid in is greater than what we anticipated to pay up the salaries. However, will that mean that we need extra classrooms and we actually hire another para and another teacher? And does it actually come out to a cost? So I'm using that as one example. I can't say for sure when will it become a concern, really have to see how the rest of the hiring shakes out. I probably wouldn't honestly be concerned about much of anything until close to the holidays because so much fluctuates with the hiring through the beginning of the year. And I'm going to add, we, like every other school district, will have people start. It's more common and maybe paras and stuff like that, people who have never done the job, don't really know if they're going to like the job. They might come in, be excellent at it, but after two months, they might decide this isn't for me and I found something else or whatever it is. So we can never say that every filled position is going to be 100%. You know, the budgeted amount will be 100% spent. And there are certain positions, like I said, that tend to have more turnover than others. However, the mitigation strategies, I hate to even say the word because I don't want anyone to hear the soundbite and take it out of context. There's always soft freezes. There's always full freezes on portions of things, you know, that's come up earlier tonight or or the expense budgets. We did that last year. We don't want to do that again, but there's that. We also can look at other funding sources that, and we don't have a lot of extra funding sources. We don't have a lot of gift funds or anything like that here, almost almost nonexistent, to be honest with you. But we look at all of the funding sources to to fund everything we need to do to the extent that we can make the most out of them. And for instance, one of the positions that we looked at filling this year and tried to before, but it was more difficult after COVID, a speech-language unit A person, because we have been having to outsource at a significant cost. So we're hoping that if we fill some of those positions that have been harder to fill, that we will have some savings on the expense budget side that would have gone to contracted services for some of those things. So again, you know, we 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 get it down to as close as we can, but it really fluctuates constantly. So I would say in the in the general general answer is, I'm probably not going to be terribly concerned about too much of it until we get close to the holidays when the positions sort of are filled and solidified and we and we know where we have a salary, salaries being 80% of our budget. And and lastly, not that it goes to unemployment, but if the state, federal or state or other grant authorities give us some grants for some things, let's say some PD or whatever it might be, right? So we SEL curriculum, whatever it might be, that we might be planning on out of our budget. Sometimes something like that frees up, and it might be smallish grants, $25,000 or $30,000, where now you can move that expense over to the grant. That frees up money. So all of those things, we tend to usually find out a lot of it between now and and the holidays.
Dr. Baeta.
Madam Chair, through you. Heidi, in a very simple yes or no, is it your experience to see a line item for unemployment on the operating budget of a school budget?
Not in my experience. It has generally been.
So I would ask the I would ask the committee, but there's over 60 years of experience in public education between Heidi's office and my office. Why is this in the school department budget? It's a question that needs to be asked. And I'm not trying to ravel rouse. I'm just simply stating for the record, this is not a typical practice. And I'd like to have further information on how we got here. I'm a former school committee member. It was not here when I was on the school committee. So this is a new practice that came into place at some point since the 2000s that I've been around. So I like some fact-finding, if that's possible from the committee. And and I'm happy to take that lead. I just want to make sure that the committee is understanding of why I'm asking. So that's that's part part one. And then the part two, Heidi, would be, yes or no, have we received details as it pertains to who these staff members are?
Yes. HR department is able to go in on the unemployment website and actually get that. And the town also sends it over when they they go through the bill and take off what's their portion, what's our portion, and send it along.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments from the committee? Yes, Ms. Shannon.
Just a point of clarification, Heidi and and Dr. Baeta. So I totally hear you on the UI being an unusual line item. Where would that normally reside? Am I correct in assuming that would be on the town side? Because obviously, that expense would be covered somewhere in a in a typical town budget, I'm saying.
My experience has been that there's a line item called unemployment that is part of the operating budget. And because those line items and and the point that I would make is the potential savings that there is in other areas that take place because that that employee is no longer an employee. So my history has been to see $75,000 or $100,000 in a line item that covers every employee of the of the community, regardless of what department they belong to.
Mr. Revosa.
I guess what are the steps to fix it? Make it go back to usual?
Yeah, I'm not sure that it's a fix-it more than it's a request for further information about how and why this is happening. I I just I I don't have that information. I don't know that information. And I just seek to, before I'm questioned about why I'm asking it, that the committee understands why I'm asking it. I I just, I I don't know why it's happening. I'd like to see, is it a it's is it a a written understanding between all parties? Is it something that was done years ago? I I don't have that information. I just want to make sure that the committee is aware that I'm going to seek to get that information. I'm not necessarily seeking to change it. I'm just seeking to understand why it's done this way.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on unemployment? We're going to stick with Ms. Perkins and start discussing the FY25 Town Meeting articles and capital planning. As mentioned previously, the FY26 budget discussions will begin soon, but not yet. But at this time, we need to start reviewing possible articles for Fall Town Meeting, is our understanding that is likely to happen. It's not set. It has not been set yet. These articles could also be under consideration for the annual town meeting in May. So this is just an introduction of items that the administration would like the committee to consider for for town meeting articles.
Okay, thank you. I'll go down the itemized list first, and then I'll go back and sort of add some context, you know, which was also sent in the packet. So the town, you know, I believe it was in spring, maybe of '23. There was a bylaw proposed by a citizen that the state passed, and it stated that articles sunset. And it really depends on how much the original article was for, how long that is. It the article was not clear in stating whether that would be for new articles going forward, or if it would actually be applied to articles that had already been passed in prior years. I've been in touch, speaking with the town's finance director, Elizabeth Zalinski. And the town, apparently, over the last number of months, has worked with legal counsel to straighten that out and determine how to interpret that. And legal counsel had suggested, from what I was told, that it be applied to all articles, regardless of whether they had been passed prior to that new bylaw. So that's part one. We were unaware of that, and from what I had been told, that required the town closing and sunsetting 156 articles through all the departments in town. And all work being done with those article funds had to cease temporarily. So that's two of the items when it says restore the remaining funds. The town, or I will say the town's finance director does anticipate us putting in the first three items. They will be addressing through language at the town meeting how to restore the funds, either in either as a single article that restores the funds, perhaps, or, and I don't want to speak out of turn for the town, or perhaps it will be individual articles that will be voted on to restore the funds. But these are funds that were already voted cash in hand unless they were borrowing. And the town had the the funds at the time, and the funds still remain available at the time, other than, again, if it was an authorization for borrowing or something that's been closed in the meantime because of an article being completed. So the first one, so we prioritize the list. The first one, it's not technically the high school project because that was an authorization to borrow. It was about $6 million roughly available to borrow above what the high school came in. Unfortunately, the high school came in, you know, with savings against the budget, so that was great. So they will be asking town meeting to rescind the authorization to borrow. And that's fine. That's that. So that is not going to be part of the 600,000, the 6 million, rather. This would be technically a new article to address some issues in the stage area that were identified by, I guess I'm going into the other part of it, justification. I'll just do it all at once, I guess. There are some problems in the stage area that became apparent, I think maybe the year before last. I'm not exactly sure. And the original architect, DRA, was brought in and they got in touch with their theater consultant to come in, you know, at no charge to the town, to look at what was happening. So the context of this is that the high school did not have a drama department prior to the new high school being built. And so this was brand new, and they did not have a drama director or, you know, Kevin Halleck. I'll just say they didn't have a Kevin Halleck, right, until this robust drama program became, which is great. And then, you know, all of a sudden, we have COVID, right, after the new school. So for a couple of years, they really weren't using the stage for productions. So it didn't come up during the punch list or closing of the project or even a couple of years after the project. So putting that out for everybody to know, there was no way for them to know this. When they started using the stage for productions and actually angling the lights up on the light bar, it was discovered that the curtains are snagging on those lights. That was identified as a safety issue, a serious safety issue that we need to address. Again, town's finance director, and I imagine others at town hall absolutely know this is coming forward. It's something that hate to say it, but it would be negligent to not address it. I mean, it just would be. So so we have been working with DRA again, who have taken what they got for a budget estimate. It's not a quote, but a budget estimate sometime, maybe 24 months ago. I'm not really sure because I wasn't here, but and they updated it and added 10% for escalation. However, Courtney, who is the person who, you know, is working from DRA on the school building project and all those other things that we work with closely on a lot of projects in town, had suggested that 10% may or may not be enough. So I pushed it up to a 20% escalation, just so you know. That brought us to 441,000. The other problem with it is, so what they'll have to do is actually move the bars to not snag on the lights. That's going to be some significant work there. But additionally, the rigging, which also, you know, has to be inspected and can be a safety concern. The weights and everything, the such that it is, is the light bar itself, separate from the snagging on the curtains, only comes down far enough that we have, our staff have to get up on a step ladder to change the light bulbs or change the angling of the lights, which is another safety item that we would like to address while we're doing this. It's all it's all safety. And so they would address the rigging as such to change the weights a little bit, change the you know, the specifications or whatever have you, and and just get this fixed once and for all. So again, the town is well aware that there was a report that this is a safety issue that needs to be addressed ASAP, really, in my own personal estimation, but probably anybody else's as well. And they are aware that this is coming forward. The the other two items at the top is restoring funds that closed due to the sunset clause. They also expect these to come forward. They they're aware of them. So one of them, there was a telephone article a couple of years ago, who were far back. And Joyce Husany, who was our prior facilities director and now retired, had shared with me that we had what she called attic stock to replace phones that break. And right now, we're adding classrooms and spaces that were never classrooms because of the growth in enrollment. So we have to put phones in, et cetera. And when the high school was built, we used sort of loaned some of the attic stock to the high school project. And for whatever reasons, I I can't speak to it, whatever. I don't know if the plan was to use some of the high school project money to then rebuy the stock and put it back to the school's regular stock out of their operating budget, you know, purchasing or prior capital. I don't really know. But nonetheless, most of that attic stock was used up, and it was an anticipated situation. But, you know, occurred as the building was being built. And so the end result is we don't have any stock left. We don't have cabling. We don't have phones. We don't have anything. So we go through at least four year through breakage, wear and tear, you know, just things happen. They die. And again, we're adding spaces right now, classrooms, et cetera, in places where it was not intended to be classrooms at some point back in the day. And just for the growth enrollment. And so we have to outfit them. So this is to restore the funds that were already voted, sort of reverse the sunset in a way and bring this back so we can spend this money now and replace our attic stock. Similarly, on the DAW air conditioning, there's one hundred and ninety-two thousand and seventy-three dollars left in that article. The electrical work that has to be done, the gear switch, the electrician said, Gone Green, who is the town uses and has a contract with, and we would be using, we have a quote from them, it's a hundred and twenty thousand, five hundred dollars for them to do the gear switch. The gear switch part is out about forty weeks. So having this sunset, when we had had the quote in hand and planned to sign it this past summer or spring, to get this work done potentially this fall, this sunsetting is now creating a situation where it will be next summer. That's okay. They tied it into the bus. I'll be honest with you. I don't know exactly what that is, but some electrical thing. And I know I mentioned that before. And so now the contractors, they are balancing the system and finishing up their part of it. The electrical was pulled out of that from the beginning and it's a separate quote anyway, so it doesn't interfere with that. But we do need to address it and put in the gear switch. So the, about a hundred and twenty-one thousand roughly of this would be specifically for that. We don't know if anything else will come up, but this was a general air conditioning. So we would be looking at if any through the walls, split systems, window units, kitchen hoods or anything else that might come under this article also need replacement. And if not, then eventually those funds will become available to move to another article, which is a town regularly does when they're funding and all of their town meetings, if there's remaining funds. But we won't know that until the end of next summer. So that's, that's the first three. The vestibule at the South Elementary School, as you know, we did DAW and gibbons. And the South School does not have the same situation where we, we have an existing space that can be modified to be a vestibule. And Dr. Baeda can jump in if he wants to clarify a little bit better. But the situation is we have an overhang and we have a cement pad. That's an open space area outside. And we would be looking to enclose that. Again, this is safety and security for the students and for the staff to sort of have a place that visitors cannot just come into the school and have access to the full school. So we, this is a critical safety issue in our minds, a safety project to do. We had anticipated based on the other two projects coming in around two fifty a school that maybe it would be around that. And I had sent you sort of a heads up that, you know, that would be maybe a two fifty. The Rinaldi, who did the other two schools, met with our current facilities director yesterday, late yesterday, and said that due to the fact that we would have to add doors, which the other schools already had, and the fact that it would need some significant work on the concrete pad to have the integrity for this. He's, he's saying four fifty to five hundred thousand. So this would be five hundred thousand. And again, we're going high watermark right now. We don't have an actual quote. He would take some time to do that. And if it changes before town meeting, of course, we would drop it. But if not, again, if it's high watermark, they would just close out the funds at the end of the project and get it back. But that's, that's what he came in verbally with yesterday. The full capital needs assessment, which would be relative to all of our buildings. And I wanted to clarify, there's a lot of capital needs for FFNE furniture and different things that you would call capital, and that's not this. This is relative to the buildings and grounds. And as the town has asked us for a long-term capital plan, the school committee has asked for a long-term capital plan, this would be for a vendor to come in. It takes a lot of hours and we do not have the in-house capacity in any way to go around to all the buildings. They will look at, when do we need to repoint the brickwork? How old is the membrane of the roof? How old are the boilers? All the mechanical systems? And they will take pictures and give a pretty comprehensive report. And I've been other places where we've done it. I called onsite insight, who we used in Dover and I know Dover Sherbin, and they've had them back twice since then. They are thirty or forty years in, in the business. Out of Boston, it's just the one that I called for a quick estimate to use. We, of course, would have to go out for an RFP or an RFP on this. But using that number that they came back with, you know, our facilities director sent them the square footage of our buildings and they know from doing this every day, basically what they need per square foot. And so they were able to give us that quote without even having to come out. So they would go through, there'd be pictures of the equipment. They would state what make and model they are, how old they are, what is the industry standard for the lifespan of any of that equipment? Or the roof replacements, window replacements, et cetera. And they basically do a spreadsheet where they would put it in, say, we do a ten-year plan, which is pretty recommended. They would do a spreadsheet where they put it in, whether it's a ten-year plan or however many years you want in each year. This is, here's what you need to do in this year, this year, this year, this year. With an industry, you know, being in the industry, what they believe the price would be in that year. That will allow the town to smooth out the costs and say this, you know, where are we instead of getting surprise spikes and that sort of thing? And also balance it against the similar type of work in all of their other facilities across town. And really just sort of plan for the future and for us to plan for the future. So that process, one-time cost is a hundred and twenty thousand, seven fifty. Well, well, well worth the money. And I will say it also allows us, if something happens prior to the anticipated end of lifespan, a boiler goes or something like that, a year prior to, hopefully the timing would be early in the year. So we have, so we could look at and say, okay, well, you know, we'll talk to the town. There was going to be money for the boiler next year. We have to have it now. But we will switch and put this other thing that was going to be this year and next year. And that's really what everybody does. You just, like you would at home, jockey around what you need to do as it comes up. But it's not, hopefully, you know, just a shock to the system, I guess I'd say. So that we feel is, is critical for us to be able to put in future articles and let the school committee know and the public know sort of the issues that are with the building and some sort of cost, not just as we're, you know, trying to pull together right now for this school building project, but on all of our buildings. Here's, here's what it's going to cost over time. To be transparent, for us to be responsible in how we bring things forward for the town and for them to really be able to look at it globally with all the needs of the town infrastructure for different things. So that's what that would be. And again, you can call them in every so often just for an update. So this full cost, you know, really wouldn't happen again. Not for a long time in any case. The next one is additional funds for the wheelchair swing. That's just a new quote, the cost escalation from when it was first voted. So that's just the delta. Technology needs, the grades two to five charging carts for the Chromebooks. We have the Chromebooks, but we don't have the charging carts. So it's kind of necessary to charge them overnight, every night. The firewall is expiring. That's a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. While we share many systems with the town, I did verify today that that is just for the school. It's not like a school and town firewall. It's just a school system firewall, which is critical if that goes down, you know, where anybody can get into our systems. I mean, we'd be pretty sitting duck for that. So that one's critical. And then the security audit and I'm going to take the hit on this personally. I had estimated originally to Dr. Baeda, when we first put in for it, twenty thousand dollars because I had had one done not too long before I left Watertown. However, at the time, I wasn't really thinking about the fact that we had three elementaries and this five here. And we had left off the high school over there because we were about to knock it down and build a new high school. So I reached out to the person who did it. That may not be, you know, when we put out the RFP, that may not be the person who does it. But I reached out to him and just said, hey, based on here's what's in Stoughton, what do you think it would look like? And he gave me a price. So we would need about another twelve thousand dollars. Again, we could get a lower estimate from somebody, but we won't know until the RFP goes out. So we have to be in a position where if we do the RFP and we want to sign a contract that the funding is in place, anything we don't need, the town, you know, would get back. I will add, so I had sort of broken it out. So the total is one million, five sixty-nine, three nineteen. But the prior voted funds that are already sitting are seven fourteen, four seventy-four. So the new is eight fifty-four, eight forty-five. And of that, half of that is for that stage situation. So the rest of it is sort of small change, you know, in my estimation, looking at capital. You know, the other thing is, well, and I, you know, should have put this on, but to categorize it a different way, what I call life and safety, that just because that's what our facilities director and my last district called that life and safety items of this money, nine hundred and fifty-three thousand. The stage, the vestibule, the audit. So almost a million of this ask is life and safety. Security for technology, the one thirty. Fixtures, furniture, equipment, I'm talking the telephone and the carts, one fifty-five. Capital projects to be completed that are already underway or, you know, already voted was the DAW AC and the wheelchair swing. And then capital needs, which is really just the assessment to be responsible in further planning, is one hundred and twenty. So you can see that the capital projects that are already underway and the life and safety is about a million two, the vast majority of this. So there's really no fluff in here, I guess is what I'm saying. We're not asking for things that really, to be responsible, can be delayed. And they are critical for protecting our systems and protecting our people, mostly. So I just wanted to say that. And if there's any questions about anything, please, please feel free and I'll do the best I can to answer them at this juncture.
Thank you. And I, this is more for informational at this point. This is for our consideration. We're not voting on anything tonight. But really just beginning that informational process. We don't know yet the timeline, if there, A, if there is going to be a fall time meeting and B, what the timeline for that is. It's likely it could be in October that we might have to make a decision or not. But just to get the ball rolling and get us thinking, again, some of these may need to be deferred till the spring town meeting. So it's worth thinking about. But I'll give it to the committee for questions. Ms. Shannon.
Hi Heidi, thank you so much for sending the, the financial papers and, and for the detailed accounting for it. I just asked this in anticipation of town meeting reps asking this around the life and safety issue with the stage. I can already imagine an answer for this, having taught drama, but why was this not caught, the life and safety issues on the stage? Why was that not caught during the, the school building instruction? I know you covered some of that in your answer. But, and this, the follow-up question, which is the real question, is the drama program in its current robustness has been in place now for two years. Why is this cost now just coming to our attention?
So I'll answer that as best I can, based on conversations I have had with other people. My understanding is I don't know who brought it to anyone's attention at first, whether it was the facilities department, the drama department. Like I, I have no idea who first brought this up. But sometime back, maybe a year and a half ago, I don't really know exactly when. I don't know. Joyce Husany met with DRA and the, I believe it's a theater consultant came in or whoever helped design the area. Or, you know, it wasn't really the builders. It's really that ship has sailed. So they came in and sort of did a full comprehensive, here's what you need to fix. And here's everything that's just nice things to have. This would enhance your program. Okay. So that's the majority of the, of the report. As I came on board and was speaking with Ms. Husany about all sorts of capital needs and where we are with things, just to acclimate myself, she mentioned this. You know, I came on in July, so maybe over the winter. And we started speaking with DRA and I said, okay, I'd like to really dig into this and what do we need to do? We need to do something. If somebody has said in writing, and they have, that this is a safety issue that needs to be addressed as a priority, or I don't know the exact words, I'm paraphrasing. Then we knew that we were going to have to go for a capital item. We certainly didn't have the money to take care of it, nor did we have the expertise. And so in, and then Ms. Husany left, now Dennis Rego's on board and we sort of just recently remet again, but it's been ongoing discussion of, and I asked the questions, I'll just say it right. I asked the questions. Why was the design such that this, why was it designed this way? And why was it not caught? Because I wasn't familiar that there wasn't a drama program or that it was not being used during COVID. So that's where I got that information that I shared with you a little bit ago, that we didn't, so we didn't have the robust program, as you mentioned. And so they weren't using it. And when the lights are just on the bar straight out, it doesn't snag. So that's how they were for a couple of years. Nobody was up there. Once they started having productions and tilted the lights, that's when it became apparent. So there's really nobody to go back on. We are where we are with it. And now that it has been identified, like I said, they, I don't really know why there's some, I don't really know why on the weights that the bar only came down so far, you know, whatever that is, or something was snagged in the way or something. I don't, you know, I don't know. That's not the primary thing. But it's another thing that since we're getting up on ladders, we need to just do away with all of there. So can't say there was something wrong, right, or anything else about that, but we want to take care of that and, and remove potential falls just for what was there. If somebody's going to come in, you know, let's just fix that too. So so that's where that's at. I mean, I wish I had more for you, but I did ask all those questions. I've seen the drawings. I've walked the stage with them to learn about it myself and get familiar. And that's the information that we have, along with a report that came in prior to last July first, maybe last spring. I don't, I really don't know if that was after the town meeting. I can't remember exact timing, but it would have been too late to probably put that article on for last year's spring town meeting. And so, and we certainly didn't have all the answers and quotes for the special town meeting. And typically something this large might have not come up then anyway. I don't, I don't know what would have happened, but we didn't have all the information together yet. We were still gathering information. And the, like I said, when I asked DRA for the quote or a budget to put forth for this, they took what they had prepared when they first started looking at the issue and put the escalation on. So but I did, you know, I was there, Dennis Rego was there, seeing the weights, seeing the catwalk, seeing the bars, seeing the lights, the curtain, like, you know. It's clearly an issue. And my understanding from Courtney at DRA is that it, it wasn't apparent until the stage started being used for productions. That's, that's all I have. I'm sorry. I can't expound more on that. That's all we have.
I, yeah, I, I know the, the question will come up. I know people will ask the school committee those two very questions. And, and like I said, it's, it's not like we've only put one or two productions on that stage. And just noticed that, you know, we've, we've had quite a few productions on that stage now up to this point since COVID. But I, I definitely want to voice my, my appreciation for your diligence in having those conversations and, and being as proactive as you can rather than waiting for, you know, or not waiting, rather than us being alerted by a crisis that happens as a direct result of these, these challenges. So thank you for pursuing the line of inquiry in the way that you have and, and getting ahead of this.
Thank you. Mr. Barbosa, do you have a question?
Yes, I guess my question is, before we're able to even go to the town meeting for capital expenditures, I'm hoping Tata Payara is thinking about how we can secure these fixtures over the stage such that the productions can continue to go, but it remains safe. Perhaps there's some way to secure them temporarily to guarantee the student's safety. And then hopefully with the capital money, hopefully, we'll be able to make the safety changes that permanent and also permanent and also have it functional. That's just thinking up. And the other issue is while we're on safety issue, one of the, and I think the theater program is one of, one of the best things that, uh, that the school does with entire community, that entire community could go and enjoy, just love it. And some of these production haven't quality, in my opinion. Some problems with mics, but other than that, quality productions. And I think everyone in town should at least try to make it out a couple of productions uh, a year because they're so good. I, I know I do. Uh, the other aspect of it, while we're on the issue of safety and the other very good thing that the, that I believe uh, shows off the people and the nature of Stone, the marching band and the competition that we've been able to, some of Chris's work uh, to bring into town. And I believe we're having a championship in the October twenty-sixth. It would be wonderful to uh, just check out the field for safety issues because we're going to have not just our kids, they are going to have lots of schools' kids in there, um, to make sure there aren't any issues that we should be addressing before that event, if possible, if not, secure them temporarily at least. And the other thing while we're on the same subject is that, um, I'm hoping uh, maybe through Jeffrey, I know he's always listening, he's always around. Uh, we can somehow uh, show off the great things that the stones putting on that the residents can take here. I don't mean uh, advertise, so we're selling tickets to all the surrounding towns because we won't be able to handle the traffic. But it'd be wonderful if the entire community, stone community can look at these really bright shiny stars that negates all the horrible negative things that stone often gets. Um, it would be great. It's not only good for the school, it's good for the entire town. And um, you know, making sure of obviously that everything is safe and then of course, being able to uh, highlight these things of great aspects of town of stone.
To your point, uh, Armando, I believe we have uh, almost twenty, if not twenty bands coming on that competition day.
It's very good.
Thank you. Um, any further questions or comments about the article, the article proposals? Is ours incorrect there? Um, I have a couple of questions or one question, one comment. Um, one is the, given the relatively smaller size of the request for the additional funding for the wheelchair swing due to the escalation cost inflation over time and the need for additional um, funding for the security audit, are there potentially other sources of funding for this? You know, I, obviously the operating budget is very tight since we have the bus that we're solving, but um, you know, just thinking that these are, these are sitting for these smaller funds, these are funds that we were coming back and asking for more and, and, you know, knowing that we might not get all, you know, the chance to ask for everything. Is there a way we can resolve those issues without having to go to town meeting?
Um, so while it would still be a town meeting vote, as I sort of alluded to earlier, the town, if, even if you look back in the town meeting books, but actually it was the finance director who also said it to me. If we, we have, but I have to check with her and see if they've already been closed. So we have some remaining small bits and pieces of funds from, I believe it was the West bathrooms and a few different things, right? They're smallish, but when we propose, and, and, and like I said, I want to speak to her and make sure that those are still, when I run a report, I can still see those little bits of funds in munis. But it doesn't mean by the time they close the FY twenty-four, they won't have already closed that. That'll go to free cash to be certified to be used in however manner, however. Um, and, and that process has to happen. But we can propose, if those funds are available, and, and I would plan to, to, for instance, say, let's just say the security audit, just because it's at the bottom of my list and jumps out at me. If, if I have, I think it's fourteen thousand dollars maybe left in that West Street bathrooms, I might, or we might propose to write up that we propose to transfer twelve thousand dollars from the West bathrooms article to this. And it would be like, and, and there's tons of it that goes on in the town meeting books. I've looked through them, but it's typical in towns anyways. So she's been on vacation for the last couple of weeks and as you probably know, M J Martin, her right hand also was her last day last week. So they're going to be very shorthanded for a little bit. So my plan is when, you know, Biz, who just got back yesterday from vacation, sort of the dust settles for a week or so, is I will be reaching out to her and saying, can you verify? Because the other thing that I can't tell by running a munis report is a hundred percent. So let's just say if I run it and, and I'll bring up the high school again, it says six million dollars left. I know that was an authorization to borrow. It doesn't mean they pulled down the funds, right? You don't pull down the funds on a project that big until you need them because you're paying interest on them. But free cash funded things, there is no interest, it's cash in hand. So I need to verify with her of which ones is cash in hand. I, I believe I do know looking at it, but I want to verify. I'll add those up and say, okay, here's what, here's what we can close. And I already know which ones we can close. Already told her which ones we can close, they're done. Here's what we can close, it adds up to X, and then we will propose to do some of these smallish things, um, you know, with that. So that is the intention. I just couldn't put it down here yet because I haven't gotten confirmation of that number yet, but it's, it's not a ton, um, but there's something there.
Thank you. Um, I do want to note that, you know, I really understand the, the concerns with safety for the South Festival. That's been an extremely high priority for that, those families. Um, you know, it's one of the few schools we have that doesn't have any sort of double entry or really any secure entry into the building. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail outside of executive session for obvious reasons. Um, I do understand the town's reluctance to spend money on that school, given that it's earmarked for replacement, but we are talking about safety here. That is a building that is more accessible than even the other ones that we added vestibles onto. So um, you know, I just want to stress that it, it really is a, a concern for the, the students and the staff of that building. Um, especially given that's a voting place, but even just general access to that building. So I just wanted to note that um, that, that one is really serious and if people don't understand, you know, if we can, if there's a way that we can help them understand, um, just how serious the, the safety concerns are there, that would be good. Um, any other questions or comments about the articles? Yes, Ms. Shannon?
Yeah, I just wanted to echo your points, um, Madam Chair, about the uh, the vestibule at the south, um, that has long been a concern of parents at the south uh, as well as teachers and staff. They have put in some stopgap measures to try to address those safety concerns. But, but without that vestibule, there's, there's not necessarily a lot that someone could do to stop someone from forced entry, really. Uh, once a door is unlocked. Uh, the, the point I wanted to make there is I'm trying to catch up with my brain, my brain, it's like my brain is on such overload as I'm sure everyone's is at this point, um, this late at night. But I did want to raise that simply because of the public comments we received in our July meeting, uh, the parents who specifically spoke about uh, health and safety concerns uh, at the south school. So I, I did want to resurface those comments and let the parents know that we did hear them, um, and appreciate the district's office and, and working to address them.
Thank you. All right. Anything else? We're going to get, this is going to be your discussion, Mr. Barbosa, yes, before we move on.
I was, I was just wondering if it's even possible to reach out to the town representatives and give them a heads up so they're aware and if they want to look at these issues, they can instead of just, I'm, I'm always for, let's see it in advance, let's think about it and let's solve the problem. And I was wondering if it's even possible to give the town reps a heads up. And that way, if they have any concern, they'll probably walk down to the south school and look at it themselves. And then when we have a town meeting, they're already much well aware of the situation and, and make the proper vote.
So, uh, Madam Chair, through you to, to Armando, I don't disagree with your thinking. I think that it circumvents the process of town government in Stoughton, which is district or a department to the select board, to, from, in this case, the school committee, to the select board, to the finance committee, then as a recommendation for town meeting. So I think the work would, would be, um, would it be seen as circumventing the process? That's all I'm putting on the table.
Okay, I, I, I understand the concern. Um, it's a matter of a huge safety. Um, it, it's not, it's not just an ordinary piece of uh, ask for money. This is, this is children's uh, lives and, and that concerns me a great deal. And um, I believe the more people that know about it, well, that it's a security, so we don't want everyone to know about it, but I believe the more town representative they are familiar with it, uh, will probably agree that it needs to be done. Um, I do understand the point. We do not want to circumvent it and all go around the, the ordinary process. It's just like, if there's a way to do it without uh, going around the process, just, there's a problem here. So at least they know about it when it comes up. They've thought about it, perhaps went to see it and so on.
Certainly we think about, as we think about our presentation and how we're going to present that, that's something to keep in mind, maybe an informational session after we've gone through the process. Ms. Shannon?
Uh, I just wonder if, um, to, to Dr. Bayde's point, if we can take a look, um, and I fried, can't remember, um, the, but the process that we had that allowed people to come in and see the south, we were thinking of, when we were looking at not only the school budget, but then also the, the building vote and allowing people to come in prior to that vote, to see the south and to have the tours. So Dr. Baeda, I, I trust your judgment if, um, if, if there's a process we can follow that would allow that opportunity. I, I agree with Armando. I think it's a really great idea to allow those who will do the due diligence beforehand uh, to be fully informed on the, um, on the items coming up for town meeting, uh, that they have the opportunity to, to, to see that issue and to hear from the staff and the building administrator on, on why it's particularly concerning.
Thank you. Ms. Perkins?
Yes, I just wanted to add one other thing. Um, when the town, and I'm not suggesting that the town do this or saying that they would or anything else, I'm going to be very careful. But when the town rescinds an authorization to borrow, they, for instance, if the new school build happens, rescinding the authorization to borrow on the high school would become, the authorization to borrow, I'll just say essentially in, in short, shorthand, um, would essentially be used towards the new school, if the new school, you know, presumably, right? So that's what can be, that those authorizations already there and they can have it voted to move that authorization to something else. So I can't speak for the town. I'm not trying to do that in any way. I have no idea what their plan is. Um, but potentially, um, that would be an avenue that in rescinding the authorization to borrow for the high school, the six million dollars, perhaps, um, the town would consider voting a certain amount of that authorization to borrow for this project, which would just allow them to go out and borrow the funds. Uh, again, they may, knowing that we won't know until the spring what's happening with the new school. We would love to see this done sooner rather than later for the obvious reasons. But if worst is, comes to worse and, and that, for whatever reason, doesn't happen or can't happen. Um, and they do want to wait and see if the new school gets passed, and I can speak for anybody, uh, before moving on with this. Then at that time, again, it would either be towards the new school or they could at May town meeting, move that authorization over to borrow. If they, if, if it wasn't free cash available. I'm just speaking in general terms of what can happen at a town meeting. I am not suggesting or in any way speaking for the town. I just being very cautious, but um, those are some avenues that can happen if free cash was not available.
All right, thank you. Anything else? Otherwise, we will keep revisiting this. So if you have other questions in the meantime, send them to the chair. I'll send them to you, Ms. Perkins, if they're um, about this or Dr. Bayde, if, if that seems to, I mean, I guess, Mr. Barbosa, one more question?
Heidi, thank you. I didn't think of it that way. I think it's a great option to put in the presentation that people may not have thought of. At, at least I didn't. Thank you.
All right, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the south school statement, or it's going to be the school committee statement on the south school and redistricting plans. Um, this is related to the next three items on the agenda, the south elementary school building needs update, the Wilkins Elementary School building needs update and the redistricting update. Is there any objection if we take all of these kind of together, since they sort of are going to, the discussion is going to ebb and flow among the, the, the various topics? All right, seeing none. Um, the most important update to this whole um, discussion is that the MSBA, the Massachusetts State Building of the Massachusetts School Building Authority granted the, the um, request to extend the deadline to prepare for and execute a townwide revote for the debt exclusion to fund the project. Um, there is a new deadline for us. If the district is unable to secure the voter approval for the building project by April third, twenty twenty-five, the district will have to remove its statement of interest and resubmit a new statement of interest and wait for a new invitation from the MSBA. Uh, so that, that is great news that this is underway. Um, the building committee has not met since this extension was granted this month, so we don't have an update for them. I do want to note that although the school committee continues to believe that the proposed new consolidated elementary school represents the best decision long term for the Stoughton Public Schools educational and capital needs, we must move forward with the results of the June special election vote. We have to plan to address the critical south and Wilkins buildings needs without the forty-seven million dollar grant that the MSBA would, would, is off, still offering if we have the revote. And we still need to redistrict the elementary schools based on our population changes. Uh, you have in your packets a drafted statement, um, to issue on behalf of the school committee to the district's families notifying them of all of this information. Um, we appreciate everyone who's watched our meetings. We know there's a lot to sit through. Uh, we recognize that not everyone has the time and energy to do that. Um, to that end, we've kind of drafted this statement to make a clear and concise summary of where we're at, at this point and where we're, what we're looking forward to do. So that is what you have before us. If you, I, I don't know if anybody has any comments or suggested changes at this point. We can also send them to the, noting in the late times, send them to the chair, um, for revision or for, for the consideration, but we are intending to issue this to the, to the families, um, either before school starts or shortly after school starts, so that they are aware of the coming redistricting, which is going to affect all across our elementary schools, as well as the fact that we are going to address the south elementary school and potentially the Wilkins. Any questions or comments about this? Yes, Ms. Shannon?
Uh, I, I have some revision recommendations. Um, how would you like to receive them, Madam Chair?
Um, I think given the hour, it might be best if, if people email them to me, um, and send them to me for taking under revisions. I would, ideally, I think, I know it's kind of rushed to do it over the next couple of days, but if you could do it before the Labor Day weekend, that would be great. Um, get that off your plate. If not, I'll be taking them, um, as, once I've heard from everyone.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions about the statement? I did want to ask Dr. Bayde, um, I know that last meeting, we had questions raised from parents about, um, air quality tests for the air quality of the south elementary school. And I was wondering if you had an update on, I know you've been looking through our um, our history of testing for the, you know, the building soundness and all of that.
Yeah, we have a number of reports. Um, we're going to be, I've just, uh, met with Jeffrey last week, Mr. Pickett in Communications and with Dennis Rego and Facilities. We're going to be changing our, um, one of our sections of our website to a facility section um, that will, um, be uploading any and all recent reporting that we have about any of our schools, but in particular because of the questions of the, of the south school. I can say from twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-three, um, that we have a number of reports on ventilation that meets code in terms of air coming in and so on and so forth. But those reports also seek, um, um, uh, the calibration of, of machinery, the, the looking at, at uh, things like chemicals and all of that that may, uh, may be found from, for example, uh, um, our, uh, wheelchair accessibility. Um, you know, does it have oil that is dropping onto the ground, those types of things. So um, we're going to be releasing all of those onto the website. And of course, um, I believe I release those to you as well. Um, and, um, have, have them available. We should have a website that speaks to any and all reporting around safety of our buildings available to the public, uh, regardless of what that standing information states.
Thank you. Mr. Barbosa, question or a comment?
Yeah, I would. Yeah, I would really be interested in.
I think we lost you. Armando, are you still there? While we're waiting for him to return, um, any other questions about the South School? I know we don't have much updates at the moment. Um, Ms. Shannon, do you want?
Yeah, while we're waiting for Armando to come back to us, um, I I was just wondering if this might be an opportunity to leverage that that school district physician that we have on contract. Maybe to to have a a letter in terms of what like safe amounts of whatever, you know, in terms of the water and the air quality. Um, I know he's not a a health inspector per se, but I, once again, harkening back to the public comments at our July 30th meeting, you know, the one parent spoke of a a student with asthma and just concerns about bringing that student into the South Building. Just to to reinforce what I know you've reinforced before, Dr. Bayde, that the the school, although in dire need of of renovations, is is still fundamentally a safe building. We're not sending kids into a death trap.
Yeah, I I don't know if the role of the school doctor would line up with that, but I will tell you that the consultants that you typically use will give you a report of is it within the scope or not, or they'll give you a recommendation to swab for X, Y, and Z, whatever that may be. So typically, they run through and they do a visual look, if you will, and they look to see if things are running the way they're supposed to be running, and then they'll say things like, in this case, with the South School, and I think it was 21, consider calibrating the machines, um, you know, on a regular basis and all that. And I I can share that with the public and provide the information. The reports clearly articulate that the air, amount of air coming into the building, quote unquote, meets code. That is very clearly articulated uh, within that, but I think we need to do more um, in terms of following through on those reports. Anytime you have a report and you have a recommendation, you have to take a consideration of what the next steps are, in my opinion.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think the more we can communicate that out to the parents of the South, the better.
Great, thank you. Um, Armando, I think you're back.
Yeah, sorry, the computer battery is gone. Yeah, one of the things that that still keeps me from sleeping is the asbestos tile. I was wondering if there was a report of air. I know normally you'd have air filters, and if there are asbestos particles in the air, picks it up, and then, of course, those filter has to be examined to determine if that is. Um, and I was wondering if if we've had a report of that type and whether it's wise thing to do at this point.
Our AHERA report, A H E R A, will be due um, to be reviewed this fall, but that is a report that's mandated by regulation of visual inspection and only and potential for swabbing any area done by an actual asbestos professional. Um, and so as soon as I have any of those reports updated, I'm I'm happy to share it with you and the public, but um, one of the things that happens with air quality assessments is they're done when people are in the building. Air quality assessments without people in the building do not give you um, accurate information, because the idea is X number of bodies in your building that are consuming air and um, and so on, uh, versus what the quality of the air is in the room and so on and so forth. So I will prioritize that and get information to the committee and to the public.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, we don't have any updates specifically about the Wilkins HVAC project at this point. Um, and as I've already noted, for redistricting, we'll start that process of forming that committee in September to work on the redistricting, so that will be underway. Dr. Bayde, do you have any other updates on the way to the South Wilkins or redistricting?
Just that you will all be getting requests to establish committees for redistricting at the September, probably the second September town meeting. I'm currently viewing the most recent redistricting districts, um, and what they've done and used in terms of the makeup of the committee and all that, so I can give you some different options on how you decide to take that route.
Thank you. Any questions or further comments from the committee on South Wilkins or redistricting? Yes, Ms. Shannon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to the superintendent. Uh, one of the things that you had uh, discussed getting to us was a bid for the South, and I just wondered if you'd made any progress in that?
We have from DRA, um, a report from the original building that I'm happy to share with you. It's not a full report, if you will, but it does explain the renovation addition and potential cost. It just needs to be updated.
Uh, if there is no more on South Wilkins or redistricting, again, we'll continue this discussion on those buildings and the redistricting. For the FY25 budget update, we've already kind of had an update relating to buses, to hall monitors, um, to unemployment. At this time, I don't think we have any further updates. Um, we have noted that we will continue to into September have a presentation on the updated staffing and financials. So that is um, Dr. Bayde, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we're I think we've updated the budget enough. Yes, okay. All right, moving on to other matters, acceptance of minutes. We have two sets of minutes to approve. One is from the July 23rd, 2024 meeting. At this time, I'd like to ask for any amendments for the July 23rd, 2024 minutes. Ready, has me? Yes, Ms. Shannon?
Not for the 23rd.
Okay. I have a few. If nobody else has any. All right, on the first page, um, under MSBA Next Steps, the sentence that begins enough signatures have been collected to petition the town, it's actually to petition town meeting to support a revote.
Awesome.
On page two, in the last paragraph, the sentence that begins this project was for 225 students. I changed because to but um, to note that the 225 students doesn't is insufficient. Are the school drop off lanes and parking are too small for the 225 students that the project was originally budgeted for. And then on page three, this, the first full paragraph, um, renovating the South School Building, that sentence, I would just change teen extreme to the library summer programs. Does anybody have any other amendments? If not, I want to commend our recording secretary for corralling that meeting into a very concise and succinct set of minutes. So thank you very much to Nicole. Can I have a motion to approve the July 23rd, 2024 minutes as amended?
So moved.
And that motion was made by Chris, a second.
Second.
Seconded by Lindsay. It's been moved and seconded. A roll call vote. Uh, Mr. Barbosa?
Aye.
Uh, Ms. Kreckler?
Aye.
Ms. Powers?
Aye.
Ms. Shannon?
Aye.
And myself, aye. The motion is carried five zero. We're passed. Uh, at this time, I'd like to ask for any amendments for the July 30th, 2024 minutes. Yes, Ms. Kreckler?
Um, I have two little ones. So the first is on the first page. Um, it was like the very, very top regular meeting of the Student School Committee, but it was held um, virtually, right?
Yes.
Okay, I was like, did I remember that right? Okay, no. So it was virtual, not um, at the district office. And then the other one is on the very last page, um, in the under announcement in the fourth paragraph. Just wanted to correct the spelling of um, Slack board member Deborah Roberts name. It's D E B R A.
Correct. Thank you. That was one of my corrections, too. Ms. Shannon?
Uh, yes, on uh, page four, the first full paragraph, starting with the idea of allowing. Um, if I could be attached to that, if anything, to hold me accountable for that. And uh, so uh, you know, like, uh, Chris Shannon recommended that the idea be shared, and it says with all the councils, if we at least at least put the OMS School Councils in there, but the the um, intent was that we bring uh, parents and students into the conversation. So I I wanted to call that out and make that a little more explicit. Um, further down that page, under item E, that paragraph that starts the Massachusetts Governor in the middle-ish, there's a sentence that begins the air mark. I believe that means earmark.
Yes.
Okay.
Chris, do you mind if I jump in? Because I have another correction for that.
Yeah.
Like before, the sentence before says, Dr. Bayde is concerned about the size of the classrooms. I just want to note it's the number of students.
Correct. Size, yes.
In the classroom, so.
Yeah. Uh, and that was it in terms of corrections for me.
I have one more, and that is um, on the first page, also in attendance, um, Jeffrey Pickett. There's no R in his last name. Again, thank you to our recording secretary for corralling a very long meeting into succinct minutes. Um, there's no other amendments. Uh, is there a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
So moved.
Motion was made by Chris Shannon, a second.
Second.
Seconded by Lindsay Kreckler. It's been moved and seconded. Roll call vote. Mr. Barbosa?
Aye.
Uh, Ms. Kreckler?
Aye.
Ms. Powers?
Aye.
Ms. Shannon?
Aye.
And myself, aye. That motion is carried five zero. Uh, correspondence. I just, again, just want to thank all the families who reached out with feedback and with advocacy for the buses. Really appreciate hearing from you. That's information that's gonna be shared um, with the working group. I do want to note one additional thing. This is not correspondence, that the event to hold to to honor our Olympian Fred Richards, Richard, it will be held on Sunday, October 6th, 2024, from 12 to 2 at the Stoughton High School. Um, it's an opportunity for everyone to hear from him and his family about his Olympic journey and to give thanks to the community for its support. Uh, we've had a request from the Select Board to invite other school districts. Um, I'm just waiting to work out the details. There's some concern about if we're going to allow student residents preference or not. Um, I do want to note that unfortunately, the antique fire truck that um, Deborah Roberts was hoping to have him ride in on, that is not available. So if anybody has a really cool vehicle that he could ride in on, he had a police escort to the event at Cedar Hill the other night. So if there's anything that's an upgrade room, please call or anything to reach out to Deborah Roberts, because that would be helpful. Um, any other?
Who plans the Fourth of July parade?
That is the rec department. They are in on this this, too, so I don't know if they.
Because there's a whole mess of cool cars there, so. Just just saying, they already seem to have an in. Um, and and I, were you about to go into um, anything else?
No.
I I mean, were you before closing out the meeting?
No, if you have something else, please, we bring it forward.
Do, I have um, two other things. One, um, you had mentioned wanting to see what our availability was for a mask uh, workshop for committee members to discuss goal setting, budget planning, and other topics. Uh, that was going to happen in August. I assume that's not happening in August. And have you had a chance to pursue it? That was the first one. And the second one, I was wondering if we can at least uh, get an update, maybe um, from you and the superintendent and one of his regular Friday updates on the status of the working group that we are putting together. We are putting one together for capital planning um, that I think has been in the works for some time now. Uh, and then this past summer, uh, the superintendent had mentioned wanting to set one up for budget planning that would meet on a regular basis. Uh, so just just wondering what the status of of those working groups are.
All right, thank you. Um, with regard to the MASC, the Massachusetts Association of School Committee Workshop, that sort of fell apart because end of August just ended up where we were scattered everywhere, and the person who would have led that workshop retired. Um, and the other members were not able to, they were, they were already booked. Um, they do offer, and I think we might shift it to be slightly more of a budget process, um, but still focus on goals. Um, I need to reach out to them. That was actually uh, something I was planning to do tomorrow, um, is to reach out to them about hosting their, them in a similar thing to talk about budgets. Um, they do a presentation here um, about budgets, about Chapter 70 funding, which I think would be great for all of us, even those of us who've been on the committee before, just to have that review, especially since we're starting the budget process early. Uh, I know that they don't usually do that for schools in September, but I think it's worth asking them if that that would be something they would consider doing with us. Um, so I would still appreciate your availability in September, October. Um, looking forward to that, but um, that is, that just kind of fell, the the original plan didn't happen, but we are still hoping to have some, have them come in and help us have some discussion about that. Um, with regards to the working groups, um, we had the Facility Master Plan Committee was originally was formed several years ago or reformed several years ago. We could think about reactivating that, or we could have this separate working group for capital plans. Um, the Budget Working Group, I would like to hear a little bit more about what that would look like. So that's something the superintendent and I can discuss and bring forward to you. Um, next meeting. Anything else from committee members? I would like to note that our next regular meeting is Tuesday, September 10th, 2024. That will be back in the conference rooms of the district offices. Uh, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Right, motion made by Chris, second.
Second.
All right, seconded. That was Lindsay?
Yep.
Okay, yeah. Moved and seconded. Um, roll call vote. Mr. Barbosa?
Aye.
Ms. Kreckler?
Aye.
Ms. Powers?
Aye.
Ms. Shannon?
Aye.
And myself. So this motion is carried five zero. The meeting is adjourned at 9:53. Have a safe Labor Day weekend, everyone. A great start to the school year. Thank you very much for staying with us for a very long meeting. Thank you all for coming and good night.
Happy Labor Day, everybody.
Bye.